Everybody with that person would know their profit ran out.
Let us call the meeting to order a little bit. We're gonna get in, so we can get started here. I know you got in bombardment with our, what happened today. Boys don't understand that. So this is a bunch of meeting, thank you all for coming. And this is a continued P. Commission, our y'all are ready to begin. Starting with the top of the, top of the page. And I guess, Melissa, you want to start to, start talking us through it?
Sure. If you want to start with just, obviously not the spreadsheet, you don't need that. But the estimated carryovers, I believe a correction on that today was a formula that was carried through that's not correct. But it still shows that our estimated carryovers are about almost 7.2 million. But the number that we're dealing with is our about, of course, is our estimated revenues as compared to our estimated expenses at this point. Estimated revenues are at 10.272 million. And the estimated expenditures will be 9.8 million. So, as you can see, there's, there is some, a little bit of lag right there of about four or five hundred thousand dollars. That would make our estimated reserves at the end of the year seven million, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars eighty-four cents.
Okay, you pretty comfortable with that shot?
Yeah, I feel like I'm about it now. Going through and I've worked through the revenues.
I have me and Ella.
Yes, I understand. What I had on the original copy was, first of all, I had the carryovers from the previous year and the revenues together. As you know, I had that together. But when I was splitting that out today, I realized that the carryover for general fund actually had the total carryover number pulled into it. So it was not, it was the total of all the funds. So when I corrected that, that pulled that out. But it's still in line with what we kind of anticipated before. It's not that far off. I think you all know, I, you've already expressed your concern that that number's staying too high. And I think that I've just found that number, so I feel a lot better about that now.
So, so the money's in the carryover, the mistakes in the carryover?
Yes, in the carryover, not in the estimate of the revenue, not in revenue and not in expenditures that I, what I've got. And I've been through, I think every so long, spreadsheets, trying to make sure that all of our formulas are correct. It's gonna happen. I wish I'd had a little more time before, I'd say either rough graph to begin with. But, and it's, it is a rough graph, and I still feel good about our numbers as far as our revenues and our expenses. So, going through, as you can see, as you work through our revenues, I don't anticipate a huge change, but there is, you know, there's gonna be a little increase in our property tax. I don't have a lot, I really feel like our county sales and use tax, second line, I really thought that's gonna be higher than that. Even though my estimate shows a little lower than what we've received. And the reason being is, you all remember back several months ago, that we had a big sales tax collection month? That had one particular vendor in it that had a lot of sales tax that was remitting. I have been cautious, because I always still feel like that's a possibility that they may come back and want that back, that it was a mistake. I've been reporting these, since they haven't heard word about it, I think that it's fine, and just carry on, keep carrying on. It's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so I'm really kinda skeptical about carrying on that.
You never reached out to the company to find out?
Oh, I don't, I wouldn't even know who to reach out to that company. That is really, I don't know, revenue, that's their job, is to administer that collection for us. So they have reached out on it in a number of different ways, in a number, number of different times, and they have not heard anything about it. Like I said, it's on my, my precaution here is that I don't want to anticipate us receiving that again this year. It was a one-time shot, and we may have, it may come back on us. So that's why estimating our sales tax there to be a little lower than what we're actually, we'll have collected by the end of this year. If anything, I'm erring on the side of caution, is the point on that. I still show, in the end, for, if you add up all of our revenues, and look at the total revenues for the year for general fund, I still show that we have a slight increase even with that caution taken into account. And our SSUT, I even kind of did a little low, I think it'll be more than that, I think it'll be more than one in this this year. But with SSUT, just like any other sales tax-based kind of item, there's fluctuations throughout the year, and we're on a little bit of a downswing time of the year for our SSUT collections. So the last few months of the year may not be an average month, basically. Because the first nine months, you've got your Christmas sales and all those things in, in effect. So, like I said, it's a little bit of error on the side of caution on those. If anything, it should be higher, is my, is my goal. So as we continue, gasoline tax, not a whole lot of change in that. I changed the way I did the different expenses and revenues for our engineers department. And I'll tell you why, and it'll make sense to you, it's a little bit confusing. All the, all the numbers will end up adding up to the same, he pretty much gets the same every year for his gasoline taxes. He is allowed to use some of his triple R money to reimburse gasoline tax for things like salaries, and things like rental of equipment, basically, he's renting his own equipment for, for his triple R projects, from gasoline, and some of the materials. The way the Alabama Department of Exec, Examiners wants us to record that, as part of that is revenue and part of it is an offset to expense. So I have adjusted the way I budget for that. In the end, it's 111, it's 112, all of those play together, they all end up with about the same thing that they had before. I just actually clarified it, I do it this way.
So forty-seven, two fifty, we have thirty-five thousand dollars, that's just cause you count it different?
Yes, because I'm counting, I'm counting it a little bit different, accounting it as, as a revenue, because it actually shouldn't be a revenue. The real construction equipment is the only thing that the Department of Examiners wants us to count as revenue. So that's why I put it on here. As I have gone through this process of doing budgets for a couple, two, three different years now, I'm actually seeing more pieces of this, and how this all flows together. I would have crated it year one and hadn't realized that that's what that was supposed to be. So...
I mean, basically...
It's not, it's not wrong, it's just different, it's just a different revenue.
If you get in a state project or federal project, you just, we getting rent?
Yes.
And the money for our equipment?
Yes, absolutely. So that's, that's why you'll see a little bit of differences in the way those look. But in the end, all of his funds end up adding up pretty much the same thing he always gets, it does not change all that, all that often. Especially, you know, your, your rebuild on the land, that space is pretty steady. Your FAF, they all stay fairly, fairly steady. As you go along, you'll see what you get past his funds, revenue commission, those numbers are pretty, pretty solid too. Those are pretty steady numbers. And of course, a lot of what we get from the revenue commission is budgeted out, and it's actually requested as a budget request for the state. So those numbers are what Joyce has turned in to the state for her budgets. So, same thing with our...
Those numbers that Joyce turns in, those are pretty solid numbers, correct?
Yes, they are, yes, they are.
Okay, so...
They're almost, and Joyce knows, they'll be almost to the penny. I mean, you know, pretty well, like that, because that's what they have already agreed, that she, it's been for her departments.
So, so for twenty-four, it might have been two sixty-seven, ninety-nine, eighty, sixty-eight, right? I'm, I'm, oh, I'm wrong, I'm on the wrong page. Now I'm down one, two sixty-eight, I might be wrong on this figure here. Nope, I'm on the right page.
Okay, you're looking at the, the 119 fund. And so that's because Joyce is collecting in rares, so she does some numbers. So she gets those, she gets me those numbers directly. So the twenty-five amount that would be budgeted for revenue will be two ninety-one, the two hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred dollars.
And that's what I was saying, because on my budget, I'm going, the only way I'm gonna do it is I get more budgets, the more I can look at. So in twenty-four, it was estimated it was one eighty-nine, coming two eighty-nine. And then, I guess you said that we just had two sixty-eight. I'm just finding...
That, that looks like that's just, it's not, it should be the total, that two ninety-one, four thirty-eight, fourteen, and the interest right there, that number does not look correct.
Okay.
So that's just a case of where something has an old copy for it all the way.
When you put these numbers in, does your program do the math, or you do it...
It does, as long as something hasn't overwritten the formula. And it's easy for that to happen, because there's so many formulas in these spreadsheets that actually did this for you. But probably it has, it was keyed at some point in time, probably last year, it was keyed in, hard keyed and sort of keyed over a formula. There's a way to lock the formulas, and I'm gonna go for this year, I want to get done the whole, like, budget process, and actually lock the formula where you can't key anything on top of it, and that's how that...
And see, sometimes as I look through this, and then when I get your rough copy, first thing I do is I grab everything I've had from the year before, the year before, because I keep all of my budgets. And then I go looking, and it gets, it gets, it makes me dizzy sometimes, but I do that. And that's when I see something that's drastically changed, that's when I always like to say, look at this, look at this, look at this. And then, by the time we get to two point one, or two point two, we've corrected those areas. So, and on your computer, since we're talking about your computer. So how far do you go back, and you're sitting there and you're looking, if you just go to the last year, the year before, you keep a couple there just to keep you an idea of those. And then, and that's what, usually, which I didn't have, the description, you know, I copied that description. So when I don't see that, and then it's sort of, I sit down, it really makes it, but I like what you've sent me, where you put this on this side, in this side, because blinking up that really helps, when you put that number here and here, because you can follow it all the way across. So it, it would, I like you putting the number there, but the description really helps us to know, but then we know which line item we're on. But what I do is, is I look at those numbers, and I look at every one. And so when I start seeing, the only thing I know is just calling you and say, hey, it sort of looks like it might, because we always go to Joyce's numbers, but we always say, when she sends us that number, and it's typed in, that's the number.
Correct?
Right.
And that's at rear, so we know that number can't change, and that's the only thing, when I'm looking at something over here that I got last year, and I look over here, and that number changes, it rattles me a little bit.
Right.
So that's, that's where I'm at with that.
I understand.
Okay.
And I did use more than one year when I'm looking at it, a lot of times I'll have several, and I'll, I'll hide them, you know, later, so I can just correct what I want, and that's what happened, and that case was, I actually have descriptions in, I have the actual department codes, the GL codes for every line item, and then I have everything else hidden, and just have the amounts that went with those GL codes. That helps me, because it is much easier to follow it across than trying to follow a number, and then there's some writing, and then a number. So that's what we're talking about. But on, on page six, that she brought this up, you can see those twenty-four estimates, some of those totals are not, the, watch a couple of ones there are not correct. It looks like they were hard keyed, and it looks like it was pretty much just for revenue commission office. But the estimates right there are Joyce's estimates. So those are the twenty-five, the far right column, that number should be correct, because those are actually keyed in, and those are added correctly. It just looks like the ones that I copied for from last year may not have the correct formula on there, they're actually like, are keyed in. So if you're looking at the top one on page one twenty, I mean, page six, the twenty-four column is gonna have those first two batches right there, are gonna have to be added together to get the correct number, but... So like, your twenty-five is correct, as far as what I was predicting, but that bottom number is true. Yes, because we're talking about on the five, on page five, or you're talking about on page six, on the five thirty, it's because I don't have a grant included in that, because sometimes I don't remember grant numbers. Crystal, do you know the annual grant that's gonna be for FY twenty-five, I know sometimes you don't know any payouts?
I have a copy of one, yes.
I see. So that's hard to budget for, I don't know if she's gonna receive it, or how much she's gonna get when she gets it. So sometimes, like, if I, if I know, I can put that in there, but I often don't know. And I remember asking you that last year, and I came to answer for that question last year, because it's something, you're just waiting to hear about it.
So, the two, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, that number's right for all the grants you got last year?
It'd be close, I think.
Or you say two ninety-six?
Two ninety-six. It's, it's on your page there, if you look on page six, toward the bottom, for twenty-five revenues?
Yeah, I see. Two ninety-six, seven sixty-two, sixty-six.
And that's, that's most likely, that's exactly what we're saying so far, that we reported as number one grant revenue.
So that's where you got the number dropped, because of the number in, in that slot?
Right, because we don't know if or what we're gonna receive. But, so if anything, we need to, basically. So, if there's more questions about revenue, when we talk about that, I think, I know she's usually more questions about the expenditures than there is anything else, so...
On the, on the budget, because it seems like we're getting a lot of unknowns. How long do you meet with the department head to discuss their budget?
It varies, depending on the department head. Some don't, Crystal usually doesn't really sit with me, she knows what she names of her department, she'll send me over her spreadsheet, and we'll, you know, look at, I let everybody know that I'm available, if they want to sit and talk about it. Some of the department heads know what they are asking for, and in their summary, their narrative, what they're asking for, if they're asking for an increase. Lee and I probably met for two, three hours, plan for it, and whatever it is, so it just varies upon the department.
So, so do you, I guess, what I'm, or you meeting with everyone about the department heads?
Where budgets, no. If they, if they want to meet with me, they meet with me, if not, they send me their budgets, and I'll give them, if they want me to meet with everyone, I'll make a point with them.
I think, I think you, now, I may be speaking out, you know?
No, I thought, I thought...
But I think that meeting, because I know I've talked to the sheriff, you know, and I think you need to meet with each department head to really get a good feeling of what they're needing, what their needs are, and what, because, you know, you've got to direct them in the path of, you know, we don't have the fund for this, maybe you need to cut back here, before it forgets to us.
Well, I think, I think it goes into your notes that you have, address things that's going on, that's outside the box. But a lot of times, you're talking about a array of people that's been here many years, and understands the budget probably better than the ones that are putting it together. And because, and that's the reason why, when I look at certain numbers, I always know what those, I always look at those numbers just to see if anything's missing, and if I see something that don't look right, you know, because I've been dealing with it for over ten or twelve years, and I've, and usually I go through those numbers, I look at them, but if I see something that don't look like, then I always make the phone call. But sometimes I really think that would, would help your whole team the best, your whole team, is, is, is to get more one-on-one with the department heads.
I'd be glad to do that.
Yeah.
You know, and I started off, I started off kind of doing it in the first year, and then I got a lot of, you know, well, I've kind of got everything written down, I'm gonna send you over my budget with an error, then if you have questions, I'm looking to everybody else.
And a lot of times, you know, and once, and once you're looking at the budget, if you got the budget from last year, is wait, I know a couple of people in the past have done, they've come over here, and they have a whole list down through here of what you talked about with that department head, and then at the end of the day, the only thing you can do is take their suggestion. Anytime they give you a suggestion, tell you what they want, it's nothing more than a suggestion, because at the end of the day, we're the ones that gonna have two black eyes. So, we're used, you know, as commission's job, the best ones with the black eyes, your job is, is to bring the black eye potion to us. It's the only way I can express it for you. So, I think that's one thing, I think would help us a lot on this, is that more communication on that, but we'll move on, just going down.
Okay, and in the future, it might also help you if, when we get those, it's, not everyone even does a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
A lot of people, you know, if it's a real simple budget, they just say, well, I just didn't increase in the stock.
Right.
And so we just, we did that as a request, and put that in. But, like I said, I'm, I'm available, and I will make an appointment to maybe their department head in the future, and if we're sitting down and need that. I did know that, you know, I did get a lot of insight working with Lee, as long as I did this time, it's the longest he and I have ever stepped down a little bit of budget, and I think he gave, he gave some understanding too, how that moved forward for his department.
I think, you know, especially with a budget like the sheriff has too, he has such a large budget, and just sitting there with him, and just having open communication with all of our departments, I think it should have done a period.
I agree with that.
So, where are you at now, what page are we on?
We're on page six.
We're on page seven. That starts our expenses, so...
Who's department are you doing it in? Who's on first? I think pro rates at first, right? Do you mind, I brought Lori here, Chief Clerk, don't we blame you?
And obviously, I would just say I gotta go grab something that'll wrap that.
That's what we got, one third brewing, one third brewing on. Alright, so what, are we ready to move on to each of the budget? I mean, are we moving, department heads, y'all ready? I know there's confusion on the front part, but we can, as a commission, come back.
Okay. Go work with her, remember.
Alright, so let's move to the first budget, would be the pro rate judge budget. I did ask Lane to be a boss, since he's coming in, to give, to give him some input, and Lori, and what we've gotten. We did ask for a few things, Lori, I'll let you...
Alright, so the first thing that we asked for was an air conditioner, and that was struck down, but, thank y'all, we have that in works.
We're getting a new air conditioner tomorrow, but it's because it's coming out of...
It's coming out of maintenance budget.
It's been a cool seventy-nine degrees in my office for two days, so we appreciate that.
Let's just start the top line and go down, if we don't skip around, I'll walk down. Okay, okay.
Alright.
You got an income and judge, so that should have been prorated, is that figured out?
Are you talking about on the salary lineups?
Salary.
I did not count that as part of it, I did not make that adjustment, I tried to work it in.
It needs to be, you got three and a half months, and then the rest of it would be lame.
Yeah, I agree, that does need to be worked on a little bit. I wanted to talk to you all about that, if you want me to go with it, split it out, and yes, I agree with you, that number should change.
Okay. That has not been adjusted, go ahead.
It's not been adjusted.
Right, I mean, I'm not trying to take over, but what we normally do, is just go down the numbers, that's what we do. Right, 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 right.
So that's gonna...
But, but I, but also, I know that we had some requests, that's why I asked her to start with her, our requests. But if you want to start with the numbers, looking at...
That's gonna change all of that, that's gonna change your retirement.
Retirement, health insurance, we might as well move on down to...
What can I ask for a question before we move to the fourth? On county employees and salary wages, are we implementing the step raises, right?
Yes.
So would that, where are you at?
Um, no, this, this step raise is drawn there, so it is included in the FY twenty-five. Now, I'll say this, I get, I get my salary budget from our HRO, and I use those numbers that she's getting.
That's right.
Okay, so, when I say that that has not been split out, has to be for that reason, but it can be split out, as far as per current rate goes.
Okay, one twenty and one. Why was that cut in half? Is that just because Ryan's doing it now, or...
It's, it's based, no, it's actually based on what's actually been put in the retirement, that, and that, we don't have any control over that, let's change ours, say, every year.
That's, that's awful big number, I mean, we've got some people saying that.
It does, it fluctuates, I will double check on that.
Or you shift it to the next one?
Uh-huh.
It should have been that, but we didn't make sure it was that.
Yeah.
It can change.
Seven hundred, but it's not, I don't know.
One percent, three percent, two percent, it's surely not, that's a good...
Okay, well, one twenty-two. That was a six thousand dollar change.
One twenty-two, yes. Health insurance, they go up, and that's somewhat. Health insurance and flex usually kind of go one way or the other, also depending on how many employees you have. But I see that both of those have the same number in them, so I will check on that also. And the health insurance, and everybody went up twenty percent, I said, did it not?
That's more true. They all have some people moving around too, making all their positions too.
That is correct.
But at the end of the year, we put in there to cover this many employees, I mean, that's budgeted for the year. So, so whether they were there or not, it was budgeted, so there should be some carryover on that, but there was some people there.
Right, and then without employees, so basically, that ain't no...
Everything, everything until you get down to probably pest control or printing and bookbinding, is gonna be between administration and HR. So things, are y'all, are you ready to go there, or do you need to go, is there something else you want to talk about?
My next question was social security, it was eleven twenty, but I was wondering if things...
The health, that health's number should actually been fourteen five ninety-two. The flex number looks correct, but the health insurance number should be fourteen five ninety-two.
So what about the social security, when they get dropped?
Social security is, social security is... It is seven point six five percent of your overall salary, so that number should be...
But that might be changed too, because you're gonna change it, so...
Right, it's gonna change all of it a little bit, but seven point six five percent is gonna change a whole lot, one area, because it's just seven point five percent overall. But I could be, also, all the way.
We're marking all this as we go, right?
Yep.
Are you marking them?
I am.
And I'm also recording, so...
Okay.
Can I ask, can I ask something? No, sir.
I can't.
Tomorrow, can you meet with, can you, where are you doing tomorrow?
Just in office.
Can y'all go over this, and sort of, because she's got people that's not been in the office, and I think we probably might get, I was sort of hoping that Emily would be here, but I know she's got a doctorate for him, but, but also, I'm, it's, I don't know, I know I wasn't in commission for it, but the commission for it, I want to make sure, now, once we get through nine-one-one, they can leave. But if they weren't directed for the commission, if they leave, I want to request the leave. So that way, if we're talking about department heads as far as, because Emily's a big important part of this. And that's the reason I had requested that we have her here with us a lot of times. Well, especially because, as you see, because she has no way of telling somebody that she, that doesn't work her, her schedule, and there is a problem, it's a problem I was trying to correct. Or if I'm sitting here and I'm talking about an employee, whether it's step raises, or pay raises, or somebody not being here, especially in the budget, I just think if, if they are transferred to the commission, and we're their, and we're their boss, then they need to stay in here, and then if they need to go and leave at our commission board, because that's the only time we really have time to communicate, and then the mission can instruct them on do some. And we can always instruct you, or when Lane comes in, on how to, how that person, but I just see that if, if we're here, we didn't need that. I think, I think it's just critical to make this happen, because sometimes in the, in the past, just to try and hit things off, you know, the HR person worked for your administrator, so the administrator could...
Could cover for it.
Could cover for, and also say, hey, this is what I need today, not what I need for, but to sit down and look at this right here, that the first ten lines on the budget that were handed, this is the sign I had after it, so...
Yes.
But I could, I'm...
Well, I mean, we also, this is gonna be between us, HR, and listen right now, till we get, but I, I thought that we wanted department heads here to do that.
Yeah, well, yeah, I did, I guess so, yeah.
But I was, Terry, you wanna, there's one second there.
I am, go ahead. I'm, I'm good with the pest control, the bookbinding, we went from a hundred to six hundred, we're fine.
When, we've, in the past, had the news, well, Cleveland news, and then the news... When we've, in the past, had the news, well, Cleveland News and then the News Journal, and they only come out once a week, well, now we have to do all our publications through the Anderson Star, and that's twice a week, and then, of course, they cover a lot larger area. So, um, he was able to get everything in one book this time, because it was on impartial, um, year with Anderson Star, but he said he was looking at at least four books next year, and that is the difference.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So next is what?
You got contract services, offensive program, training, offensive program, organization, miscellaneous, safety, office supplies, that was a big jump.
That was a big jump, and that's furnishing, um, lining his office with a computer, printer, desk, um, some chairs, so that was the, the difference that we're gonna leave you with those stuff.
But I...
There is no one left though.
There's nothing left though, I use my own, I have, I don't use...
Our...
No plan in there, I think it is.
We got a lot of, some of the purchases, right?
You know, the dubbing?
Nope.
Oh, really? Exactly.
Cleaning, one of our good cleaning supplies?
Yeah, we've been, I guess, sharing with Joyce and everybody else some of the cleaning supplies there for the four house, so that's the job for her.
In the actual expense, uh, up to, um, the first night, that's, that's about two hundred and forty-eight dollars, so that's why she's trying to increase that too.
All, all about, all about.
It's just based on the expense there.
And we're going to work through this as far as this cleaning, because now we do have a cleaning person. You know, before, it was sort of tough not to have a, a person, and, and then maybe we need to do a, create work orders on that, but I'm just saying, if you need supplies, if we consolidate these supplies in one place to where, if not, maybe happen because, you know, because now we've got a person that's supposed to be doing that, and then we got, so, I'm trying to get it where, uh, and maybe get in with Sheriff for the times, um, we can do some detail.
Alright, so we moved down to what?
Two thirty-one, um, which that was included by air conditioner and that's some taken care of, so that comes out.
Mm-hmm.
The next thing we had to change was, uh, repair maintenance to two thirty-five, or are y'all looking at two thirty-three, you got a question about it or anything?
So, so the, the recommended is okay, but what I'm looking at is, was reading the question, and I'm making a check if we're saying the recommended is a check, okay.
I'm, I'm confused by what you're saying, you're saying...
Well, you're taking that ten, bringing, you were asking for quick, and then it's recommended that you got, you get to two thousand.
Okay.
Go down, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I get it.
When I said the check, we've all agreed, or I agree.
And that was the air conditioner.
Yes, I did.
What I, what I, when you say that that's not bothering there, it's not necessarily done striking me down, it's what I recommend you to try to get us down to where we can meet our budget requirements. But if you have, you know, and the way it was kind of worded was...
We don't feel struck down, we're just trying to find where we're at.
I didn't, I just didn't want to just say that way, that the way it was worded was, it has been indicated that we may have to have an air conditioner, so...
Nah, I just wanted to explain, I, the biggest explanation we have here is on two thirty-five, if y'all, is, is that a, is that a bit too far ahead for y'all?
No.
Yeah.
On two thirty-five, we got, on number nine, page nine, thirty-five thousand is what was approved for twenty-four. We requested forty, and the reason we, we did is because that's the cost of ingenuity, it's thirty-four eight hundred, that's our, that's our software. So if we go to thirty, that's not going to work for us, but we also add five thousand added to that for that, for the very same thing that would let us, you know, five folks, if y'all want to do that.
Okay, so...
Now Joyce is making, mentioning that she might team up with that, and I might, we, you know...
I know that eases the budget up for it, can we, when that happens?
And that's a one-time.
We might be better to come out for a budget, because it's...
Yeah.
Yes, we know that.
And then it's shared with both departments.
I, I don't mind, and I know that it matters, it just, it, we do the record, we do the recording, so...
We're saying we need to keep at thirty-five.
At least thirty-five, but if we want to add...
But if it's on Joyce's, then it would, that would put you at five.
If she's going to pay for that, however, we're, we have a contract with Inge Judy, she doesn't.
Right, I do not have a contract with them, but, but because it directly affects my office, I, I feel a hand in hand there, so...
Right, so you can do the contract with it, or not?
Oh, I can do the contract, I'm just, I just wanted to know why we started here, this all occurred today, and Joyce has just made this gracious...
I just said that it just would, it would make sense for us, because we share all, I, I get all of his data, um, to start our process, it comes from, um, the pro rate judge, so I'm just saying, if you need, need, need to be in on that, I'm, I'm...
Okay, can we hold it, let, let you and Joyce figure out?
Which budget is it? But right now, what I'm saying is...
No, we asked him to put forty-four.
And then plus five.
It's me, that hasn't emailed.
Forty includes a five thousand.
That's what I'm saying.
So, so you two get that figured out, and then give us the four eight number.
I'm gonna...
It's really important, I think we all kind of feel, uh, that the integrity of our, the integrity of our county has been really challenged this, today.
Have you talked to Jason?
No, we haven't, I mean, we just found out in the last two hours.
After lunch, it was after lunch.
Why don't we put the five thousand on hold, and just move on?
Well, that's what we just said, we're gonna let them to figure it out, and then we'll get back.
We'll come back to you, but we, but we have been planning this, we have been planning this, because this question can come up. This is, this is something that, so we have been asked, you know, this is something we asked for, so that's why we asked for that forty. So right now, if y'all put us back at thirty-five, we can live with that, but we'll work on the five, we all.
Moving on, because that was a small number. Where's the natural gas at?
I don't know, we don't have any, I don't know.
So we can put that zero.
We don't share any of that?
What's it?
I don't know how that's shared out.
We pay some...
I'm just trying to figure out, but I've been trying to ask, where is our natural gas?
Are you're the day, don't look right now, Carl, this is a hundred and five dollars, whatever the budget came out, now where is it?
It's at the warehouse.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
So we all have a special warehouse.
That makes sense, yeah.
And if I need to put a picture, you can get in. Are you requesting that?
That was a big job.
Why? Talk about the telephone, telephone system.
That is a request, I hear that there, but that's...
Yeah, that was, um, I don't have that quote, you were coming, for, for, to bring the phone system into the twenty-first century. I mean, there's no, um, it's just the old tummy phone system, they don't have voicemail, they don't have, I mean, anything, with a new phone system, it could be, it's like the sheriff's office phone system, it's internet-based, so when you call, you can take the burden off some employees by having all the menu to say, what we need to do to do this, you know, property, taxes, whatever you know you need to do, you can have a menu that's got all that information. If you've called the sheriff's office, you know, that's that information on pistol permits, press three, plus there's no voicemail, so if you get, just like last week, there's only two employees there, so you get a busy signal, you know, it don't, don't go voicemail or anything, if two lines, three news, um, call forwarding to, I mean, it's just, it's just an old, old phone system.
I mean, phone calls are beautiful, but that...
A lot, we do, we do have a heavy call volume, now, some of those calls are for us, and some of them are for our offices, but we do have a heavy call, call volume, and as the population has grown, those phone calls have grown as well, you know, hey, what do I got to do to change my driver's license, my car tags, so we do field a lot of calls, um, and as he said, we don't have voicemail, we don't even have caller ID, so...
We'd be able to transfer calls like...
Yes, we can transfer calls. We transfer calls all the time from our office to nine-one-one, uh, that's a one-time expense there, and the phone bill will actually go down, so it will be a savings of our time.
Can, can, if, if, if y'all go do that, we do that across the board, so that we're all kind of on the same page, I mean, I, if, if that's something y'all are looking at, can we...
Makes sense.
Make it uniform? I did not ask for that, because that was an after, after proposal thing from the state, but this...
So for your office and my, and...
Yeah, currently, I can, I can forward a call to, uh, Lori's office if I need to, um, and, and I do have voicemail set up on mine, but I do not have call forwarding, and I do not have caller ID. Those things are beneficial, especially if you're talking to somebody that wants to cuss you out, and you don't know how to get back, but that's, I'm just kidding, that's, that, that doesn't happen very often.
That was, that was, that's just a leadership style that I chose, not to have to go to both, voicemail.
And I don't like the voicemail in my office, I, I said that all along, that I like to pick up the phone and somebody answer, but after I was, I minded a lot of that.
Phone that can get picked up, at most, my old turner.
But that's the same way I am, Ryan, that's, that's what I chose to do too, I like that, but now I do like some of the voiceover stuff, like in the afternoons, when it's, when a message is left, uh, that we don't have twenty-eight blinking lights on our phone, we, we get the message, and we'll come and get to it, but, yeah, there's, there's some of that that's good, and especially if it runs across down, I'm okay with that.
Let's, let's, as we, as we work through our budget, and we, we come up with the number that we're going to have, and we, we know we got to meet our budget, let's put, stuff like this, I think, is this in our notes?
Well, she's got it, yeah.
That's what I thought, so, okay, that's something we could do, or some, it's not something we have to do, but I think you're going to have to have a dash and a chair. It's a, you put...
This is a question.
Twilight.
Do y'all get a copy of these?
I get one just for one budget, well, I don't get, I don't think I get that anymore for my budget.
I, it just seems like we're being redundant, because, I mean, everything, all these lines were shared from here and there, it was explained, and then I was proposing, line by line.
That, that's for the sheriff.
This is for the pro rate, yeah.
Well, that's for the pro rate.
And I got one for the sheriff too, it's what was in Mia.
What's the next line we're looking at?
Everything else was pretty much, uh, the line in the mail, the extra college, the prices that one's going to have to attend. Yeah, he'll have to attend, there's four different conferences, and I have to attend at least three to keep my certification as well, and so that was the difference in the mileage, um, that we had versus what was requested, okay.
Okay, then I can always try out a county card too, with my budget, what, uh, are y'all okay with a mailing going down fifteen hundred dollars?
Yes, I think we'll be fine with that.
Some of these numbers, if I, if I wanted them, there's usually the cost that's, I'm looking at, letting that so far this year, I'm estimating.
Yeah, we are not mailing out tags, like it's not a regular standard plate here, so I think that we'll be okay on that, it, it always, we ask for more whenever we're having to mail that, those metal plates, but I think we're fine with it.
So, so, and, and so we're getting close to the end, so how, so some of the changes we talked about now, uh, just follow up with Laura, and, uh, and then tell us what, what we really think that we're looking at, anything other than if we might not want to do the phones, because I think Lane's got to have a dash and a chair, just follow up to make sure what are the, of the four forty-seven and the four twenty-two is going to be.
And I think it's going to be, if, if, after we do our salary adjustments and that, that number should go down, the four twenty-two should go down, and it was four twenty-seven last year.
Well, I see the wonderful.
Now, that was my theory of the reduction, salary would just about pay for the phone system and the reaction.
That, there's a question I needed to ask you, you said that it's going to cost the phone, the phone rates to go down under this new program. So in the future, it'll save us money, but it's current.
So when you go in, running over, are you going to rip all that stuff that's, we don't know what it is, and that, oh, can we, is there a way that we can, I mean, are you going to run the new wire in there for, and, and do whole phone system, so all that phone system, all that cable is going to what?
All the old, original, yes.
So we're going to get a new, oh, I'm raising, I'll, I'll get the...
Yeah, that was part of it, is they were going to rerun wires.
We just said it would reduce the cost of the phone system and...
Well, the biggest thing of it is, you never know what you touch, and we don't know why it never comes back home, and then finally, because none of these people were here when I...
That was...
I didn't know it's all my fault.
That was part of the quote, was to get the wires, kind of, in the motor shed.
Yeah, go to the phone line.
And these phone systems are internet-based, so...
Well, what, usually what I'll be trying to...
If you move, eventually, you just pick the phones up, take a wheel, there's nothing to do. There's no infrastructures that are one all.
And if you have, if you have, you'll have, it's all copper too, part of it, and, and you got, you got a, a site that, that you can go right there and you just go there, but what you want to do is run the new wire and run that, and then go down to there and hit me there with that tester when he undoes. Because if that was one over, we're going to find that, and I think you could run it.
So, so we're leaving the budget, the same number.
The only way I agree with it, Terry, we get rid of the old wire.
He just says, yes.
There won't be a need for the old phone line.
Yeah, you got that, but a door's not, and you can't even hang a door frame out of it, but I'm turning the phones off. Y'all shut down, what, two days for us to try to figure out what we're going to plug?
Yes, it took them, yeah.
I don't think we're giving anything over on the election, but I think that's on the, the lease, is that correct? You handle all of that.
Okay, yeah.
So, you're, you're final with the election.
You're right good with the elections, I think the runoff cost us money this past year because it was just, uh...
Local.
Local, and we didn't get any, we didn't get any help from the state, using state pays for half.
And that's the city's election.
It will come up, not this year, they've got a five-year term.
They got a five-year term.
The legislature voted to move, uh...
Oh, that's great.
See the elections to the odd year, so it'll be next year.
So you'll have to come back and help with that.
Well, I don't mind helping in things.
It's a little different than, than...
Yeah, yeah, but they always are pretty good, are y'all satisfied with this budget? I'm going to let Lori go then, until I get questions.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
I love it.
Can we do a little more, I'll take you.
So, 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 so listen, you going to sit, one, if I'm going to be more, probably another day, will you make all the changes, and then y'all will just agree on that?
Yeah, we can sit down, I'll get it without you.
We're going to, without you, we're scheduled for Tuesday, I, I should have it put in, the major thing is going to take me a little bit of time, is to get back to the new, on salary adjustment part, but I can make that.
Just let me know, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Who are you going next?
No, they, they're pushing me up here, I'm on, I'm on suicide, Ryan.
Y'all saw the, uh, everybody, I mean, the, the, department judges, general fund, sheriff's clerks, all that's for you, partner. District attorney.
Y'all, I introduce my, I always send my, my budget in by June, because that's what I have to have approved by state, so I'm a little bit behind this, when I said yesterday, I didn't always send it, she was like, okay, because I have received anything with the actual...
Are we, are we, are we doing hers next, or they gonna do, uh, chair her?
They're pushing her.
They're pushing me. I, I, I think, I think they're just trying to throw me under the bus, but that's okay.
You go take over it, it makes a cost, don't you?
Yeah, I do it, if, if it pecks everybody, I do it.
So, what pays is that?
Pense of things.
Yours is bigger, but you can say better.
We must be looking at our music, the, um, specs pages were all pretty small.
No, it's all back there. No, you don't have, you don't have to. Yeah, I'm ready when y'all are. I just get anything with the, uh, salaries and stuff because I don't figure that HR does that. I do everything with the, the salaries stuff, so. And that worries me, when it's, when it's down because you did this.
They have to end the check, cause the, which one of the salary.
It should, yeah, should not be, should be, should not be the same one anyway.
Before we start, which line, one thirteen? One twenty-one?
Your health insurance and flex benefit is, the health insurance stayed relatively the same, the flex went up over time. So, if that goes up, it doesn't have to come down, I think.
But our flex should not have changed because no one has come on board that's using the flex. So, um, our insurance should have been up and the flex should have been the same. Um, we have, we have a employee that is on the health insurance and she does the family coverage, so it should not have the flex. And I'm telling you, it should not have.
I think the, um, the issue is, when you said that seventeen sixty-one, that was on there from flex before, that's not even one full influence flex per year. So, what that means is you have an employee that's on flex that was being divided between the one not doing much and the one doing more budget. And our reappraisal, so that's why it's different.
Okay, that would be the chief clerk.
Okay, so, you have one person now that is on flex and the rest of them are not all on, um, health insurance?
No, I, I, yeah, same, I don't, yes.
That's what Ellen's got on there, and so, you've got...
Chief clerk is the only one not on the county's insurance, she's down there on flex.
So, that's what you have, you divide up departments like that, is it, is it, it's reasonable to that. But what I'm showing is twenty thousand for health insurance for reappraisal there, not more than nine thousand on, um, operating. On the spreadsheet.
Okay, so, check going down, uh, the rights and Ellen going up to six thousand seven hundred and forty-seven.
Okay, you got, you got one employee in that reappraisal budget that is on flex, that's seven thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars, right, is that correct? And then on the, um...
Oh, okay.
Health insurance, I've got twenty thousand oh sixty-four on that, I'm just looking at the salaries for it, I'm not looking at the budget.
This is the first time I'm seeing these salaries and I'm already looking into it too, because that sounds a little off to me. I mean, did the insurance go up fifty percent yet?
No.
I'm, I'm a little concerned.
It actually ain't going up at all, that's, we're going on next month.
We actually just got, we just got there to dash it, but it's gonna make it, but it's not...
I mean, those, those two flex amounts...
Is six hundred eight dollars, um, a month. Six hundred eight hundred on health insurance on flex.
That's how much it costs guys.
It's more than six hundred though.
So, the seventy-two ninety-six is right, that'll be the, and you got one employee on it, so...
Yeah, they're supposed to be divided, uh, twenty-five percent on the operations budget and seventy-five percent on the, um, mapping and appraisal budget. And that is just through the state, because the state allows me to, no, seventy-five percent on operations, twenty-five on the, um, mapping and appraisal. Because she's the chief clerk, they give me a little leeway to put part of that on the mapping and appraisal budget. But seventy-five percent of her salary comes off of the, uh, the other side, or it may have been split fifty-fifty. It may be fifty-fifty for...
Kelly's is seventy-five forty-five.
Who's?
Kelly Watson, is listed on there.
No, Kelly should, should be one hundred percent off of mapping and appraisal. Uh, I only have two, uh, two, uh, employees that should be split, my part time should be, uh, twenty-five seventy-five and my, um, chief clerk fifty-fifty. That's how it is.
Can you and I sit down and leave this for a little while?
Sure, I'd be happy to, it's fifty-fifty, yes.
Can I get in the running in that meeting? Does she need to be in that meeting?
Yes, I think so, yeah, I think anything that has to do with, uh, because these figures haven't come from her.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, if we're doing a two and a half percent paying cra- craze for every employee, I already just looking at this, I'm, I'm panicking that this is not right.
Right.
And I didn't, I, I don't do this part, so let me say that, but I know enough about taxes and all of that to know that seven and a half percent social security benefit, seven and a half percent benefit, that has to be added in on top. So, all of that looks to me like we might have a problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless it's some new change in the tax law. I'm sorry.
Was there any way, when you split this stuff up, you could put a footnote so we could know what's going on?
And typically, when I introduce my budget, that's what I tell them, you know, that, that we got, with the state, I have to, I have to do everybody with the state. And I tell them that, you know, twenty-five percent is, is of the salary, this total salary is coming from mapping and appraisal and the other parts from operations. So, it's, it's easy enough for me to send that to y'all too. I mean, I can, I can do that on my end, but not without the new figures, I can't.
Forever, I've, I've never, um, I'm sorry, forever I've been, or if you add all your salary lineups of what was approved last year and what was approved this year, did go up about three or four thousand dollars. So, it's not as far off as you think it is, it may be a little skewed on the lines themselves.
Okay.
But if you add all your salary lineups together for last year, what was supposed to be for last year was a hundred and ninety-five, forty-nine-nine. And this year, so far, if you add all those lines up together, it's a hundred and ninety-eight, oh eighteen. So, it's actually gone up a little bit, it's just that there's...
Yes, yeah, yes.
So, it takes to work, so it doesn't spell work, if you remember to measure it.
Okay, um, from legal services.
It can be, it can be, because we have people picking at legal services, it's got legal services.
I'll, I'll explain in just a second, we'll, we'll talk about what we want to do with it and if we adjust higher than we want to. We've actually been on to...
So, the legal services, do you know?
There is a budget, there is a budget department just for legal service, that is where we've been paying all of our legal service out of. Um, I took it out of the budgets, I think I took it out of all of them.
The state will probably get me on that one.
Okay.
Because that is, that was, that was a mandatory thing from the state back several years ago, that called up, that that was the least that they would let us do.
That was, that was a place for your office.
That's correct, that just affects my office, because anytime we have a question that needs to go to the attorney, that amount comes out of my budget, not y'all's, it comes out of mine.
So, so, well, then, then...
It needs to be correct. Right, I, we can adjust for that, but what I, what I was looking at, at least, is that's all been the, uh, the attorneys, but it has its own, own budget.
I got you better. In the past, if I requested any, anything from the, the attorneys, it came out of my budget, in the past. I don't know about recent days, but I'm telling you that this came, this came up with the state when all of that, uh, low income housing came around and they said that that was the least that I could put in my budget, they didn't like it, and I just dropped it twenty-five hundred. Um, because we were using the district attorney's office as our, our, uh, our attorneys in the, in the courtroom. So, you know, they were, they did a really good job to, yeah. But, yeah, twenty-five hundred dollars was the least that they told me they would approve. So, I'm, I'm real surprised that we got that passed through from the state and I'm looking at the state budget then, because I, I just, yeah, it's twenty-five hundred on the approved state side.
So, we got the back, back.
Yeah.
Because everything, you represent it, not us.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, it's not just me sometimes, so...
So, that's actually why I had it, I had, I had that in my notes about the questions that I had, because we have not did, we have not encountered expense to your office.
And I'm, I'm really concerned with the new passage of the new law that they, they just did for, um, um, this cap bill that they put in place. We, I don't know if we'll put their camera a little bit, but somebody be seeing over this thing, it's, it's uncle.
Okay, okay, what about, uh, I noticed it was taken out, you didn't force them to bring it, but, but by...
I stopped doing that years ago, they said that our, um, our system, our system was considered the books, I mean, as long as we have that.
That process was...
I think that I put that all on the operations budget.
Okay, so we're taking it out?
I, I think so, I think that, I was trying to, there's too many budgets, I wish they would all get it, but no, so, you know, I know y'all be taking it.
Something with the area photo, we don't have that.
We don't have area photography, I was asked by the state why we didn't ask for that this time, because they're now four years old and I told them the last time we flew was ten years, and ten years prior to that, and that I felt like I was single ten years. I did ask if the state was, uh, allowing our area, because that would be a much reduced rate and that's what we did this last time when we had them fly. We only flew downtown Heflin and they flew the rest and, and we got theirs at a good deal, I think it'll take ten thousand for theirs and twenty-five thousand for the rest. Well, they would like, the, the state would like us to be on it every ten year. That's, that's, that's a lot of money for this county to come up with. I mean, you're talking about typically anywhere from sixty-five to a hundred and fifty to four. And so, I kept foresee doing that, especially when I have somebody on the ground and as aggressive as she is on the ground about picking up the, the actual buildings.
I think, when I write that, I, I went and picked it up before, I got that day and went and showed them some areas that we're working on. And it's like every pick fell off it down, I turned and there was a two hundred, three hundred thousand dollar, maybe more than that.
Yeah.
I was just like, hell, and then they gonna come here and wanna know why we ain't got the road taken long.
For sure, the belt going around.
I had to get the longer down the road, must've been...
So, it's large portion of the land that they've got buildings that you, that, that they're on, but, but if they have access, I mean...
Yeah, we have no access, this is what we do, we do use aerial and we do use Google Earth, because Google Earth is, um, sometimes a little more updated than our aerials. And if we see a building on there in our system, if it's on our aerials in our system, we can measure that building. We don't know if it's one story, two story, we don't know if it's Poe Barn or, because we're all getting this roof line. So, we can measure the roof line and we can give it an outrageous value and then we get done. So, that's how we typically get there, you know, if it's behind a closed gate, we give a, a notice on, a hanging tag on the gate that says, please give us a call, you know, we're trying to get behind the gate to see what you have, because if you got a gate, you have something behind it.
One thing I love talking with, uh, with an engineer and talking with Crystal, they're doing even work from ten to, what, Terry, ten to twelve, P, nine one one addresses?
Oh, yes, and they, they all call me first. So, yeah, it's, yeah, there, there's a gobs of people coming over and they're buying a piece of land and they're either putting a camper trailer on it or they're building a, um, barn, a medium house, where they're starting out with a, a metal building and they're putting, putting half of it, it's living quarter, so it's like a garage. Yes, it's, they're popping up everywhere, yes. And weird, I mean, if y'all, if y'all see one going up and you want, I'd say it's on county road such and such, we're pulled up and we'll go look at it.
We had, we had a mother's one down on sixty-seven.
Oh, yes, we done picked it up and he didn't, he wasn't happy. Yeah, he was unhappy with that. He, he wasn't happy because we not on his dole.
I was, but, but he can't do it.
Why, you didn't call him first.
But he's not from here.
Uh, no, but we did call him first. I said, how in the world am we gonna call sixty-five hundred partial, people owners every year? I mean, I'd have to have another person calling somebody else, that's crazy.
You're doing it, Brian.
Yeah.
All right, I'm two thirty-five, your computer data is, uh, jumped.
Oh, yeah.
She has the explanation of that.
Yeah, and if you look at the explanation, that's from that bill, that cap bill. Because they put that in that cap bill that our companies that we contract with to charge us to implement that cap, they did. And that's, if they would have left that out of that bill and just said that they had to cover it like their contracts, because most of my, any change, legislative change under the contract we have is covered. So, if there's a legislative change, our company, our, uh, tenant vendor has to cover that and we place, include it. This one, because they put in the words that it would come from the mapping, the appraisal budget, reappraisal budget, that allowed them to charge us. I know, I know.
Now, is that gonna wait every year?
I, I hope it's just this one-time implementation, but you know how that goes, they'll say, well, now we gotta maintain it. Or what if in three years it goes away and now they have to repeat, change the, the program again? This is, it's...
So, someone, somebody needs to be changed on the construction level.
Good luck with that.
Good luck.
Good luck with that.
And it's not gonna sunset, that, that's my opinion, it's not gonna sunset, we're always gonna be, I, um, and, and one part of me says that's good, because I've had changed the, the tenant system again, we don't have to change that again. But if it changes, we'll have to revert back and hopefully, if that's, it's easier process than going forward. This is, this is a big, this is a big thing. Uh, they, in that cap bill, if you, let's say that you have a hundred acre farm and you have ten buildings on it already. As long as you don't make any changes, that cap is in place. But if you put a roof, a new roof on a building, on that property, the cap goes away. So, you may have a year where your property taxes go up fifty percent instead of the seven and a half or whatever it is, because you had three years there that, that we were capped on and we're having to collect the difference of that. So, there gonna be some unhappy people. If you put in a swimming pool, if you add a headroom, if you put on a, I mean, anything that you do, they, the state has, has put these, these markers in it. The cap bill was no good the way it was written. I shouldn't say that, why would you take that? Because it was not, it was not the way to give people operating on their taxes, they should have done it through the homestead exemption. They should have given everybody who had a home in, in the state of Alabama that lived in their home, they should have given them the tax break for their homestead. That's my opinion. And we tried to give them to do that.
I'm two fifty-two, you all right with the reduction in the postage?
Yes, I, I, that was actually, was that actually my reduction or was that yours?
That was mine.
You requested forty-five, I mean, you got it, that was a great community.
Okay, so... No, I'm not okay with that.
What, what's the lowest number you can live with?
I, I could live probably in the three thousand range.
We didn't have any expenses at all on that line item this year, that's why I put it back so far, or I still left something in there.
Okay, so, let me explain that, why you have it cleaning up. All of my postage comes out in September, always has, always will, comes out in September, because guess who builds on October first? That'd be me. So, all of my postage comes out in September. That's why you'll see me, if there's any money left over on, um, shipping or, I mean, uh, supplies or something that I can move to that line to get a little more, that's why I said I, I can probably get down to the three, even twenty-five hundred, that'd be good.
So, we'll change that to three, figure back out the list?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe a rubber eighteen, that'd be good.
I'm tired, I'm tired.
Motor vehicle license, I thought we had our tax for five hours.
I don't know, that's something that is actually comes from, I, I don't figure that now either.
I mean, I don't look for sure, some... I mean, I don't look for sure, somebody, somewhere told me our tax is five hundred.
Oh, oh, do we have an expenditure for that line?
Yeah.
Does it say how much we spend this year or something, cause that doesn't come from there, that's ridiculous.
It's, uh, four oh seven.
Motor vehicle.
It shows, we request to file them.
And then the office furniture and equipment, it's down to zero, you okay with that?
I'll live with it. I'll live with that on that line for, yeah, I mean, on the operations budget, I have a, um, for that.
That's probably used to handle last year.
I have not, it, it, it's sitting right now, so that, but that'll roll over into this budget, which I'll approve it anyway, even though I have left over, roll over into the budget, so, yeah. Let's just hope nothing breaks down, it'll be a good check.
Well, let's start from now, cause listen, wait a minute. That's, that's a point that I, I like always make, what do you, uh, so you're taking, we're taking away the thirty-five hundred?
Yeah, she's, she still has it.
So we just remember, so what do you mean by the point about something breaking?
Uh, well, she needs, I mean, right now, we have.
Let me say this, all I'm saying is, our condition right now is costing me ten thousand dollars, taking out this budget this year.
It's better to come out of my budget.
Her, her, I'm just saying, let me finish, uh, she's got two units and they're, they're running, but we put them in before I came out. I'm just saying, the one that we looked in Ryan's office, the bottom of that coal was right, almost righted out.
So you're saying we need thirty-five hundred back then?
I would have, give us seventy-five hundred dollars, I mean.
Wait, wait, I mean, for office equipment and furniture.
I'm just saying, but you could use it for that.
Yeah, I could move it to that line, I could, if, if that was.
I'm just trying to protect this on this end, because if not, if their condition goes out, it's a hundred percent of the ownership.
Oh, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying to be a, to be a.
I meant revisions.
Yeah, you can't use a revision of that fixed asset.
Off the fixed asset.
You can't do it on fixed assets or.
So you may put it over, you think you put it under the line, whatever the line is for, um.
That's right.
For air conditions, and I'm, 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 y'all doing that in carry every year to some point.
Just wait a second.
Two seventeen, you got vehicle repairs and maintenance supplies, is that maintenance just for the vehicle or maintenance for the office?
No, those are just vehicles.
Just vehicles.
Those are just vehicle, um, when we have to have the, um, tires rotated, the oil changed, batteries, whatever one might be.
Are y'all using the cannon?
Yes. We're glad about that.
What do you have on the other?
She's got a misnous and current, that, that money could be moved to lay up over into her operation revenue condition.
So we're, I'm just saying.
Could it not be?
Word action.
So it's still a non-line, maintenance.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, asking, instead of line that we could call it that, that would be a fixed.
That you can put it in here without putting it in the.
Not gonna have explanations, it's gonna be, this line is, I don't like this line.
In your notes, you know, you would, you would put it in here.
Of course, the, the, uh, you, you got a large space across the hall, of course, so let's just say that that unit gets in for the driving.
Where do you like?
No, it's not, it's not that, it's, it's, uh, I'm just saying, if you're talking, at least I can give ten thousand. So I got a chance of free to go out, or at least, at least for the one.
Yeah.
So what I'm saying is. You got too sure?
By suit and that stuff over there.
Go back to the.
So I would say.
Well, I'm good with that, no carry.
Repairs and maintenance.
Like a carryover line, that's fine, until she.
That's what's speeding about it.
So you're gonna make, so we can make it also there, and then we're, that's what I'm doing. I'm just trying to figure out.
So, so we're, we're thinking maybe we might need to up that line and have that a carryover line every year for, for particular air condition, just for it to sit there.
What I'm looking for is also, George, if you look at downstairs, walk from courthouse to the right, she handles all the HVAC to the right, that first office there used to be the sheriff's office, is hers now.
I don't mind giving it to her, I just want her line where I can see.
I'm, I'm saying, I would, I would want it to put, they put on a solid line so that every year we know that that, whatever that amount is, it's carrying over because it, it is very expensive to replace those units.
Yeah, we just put another miscellaneous, then every year we're gonna leave, leave something, say, what the hell is this?
Okay, I would recommend you putting it on, um, line two thirty, which is a repair, maintenance performed by others, or.
That's going up to the number two.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point by there, or you.
We get to the other, we get two minutes.
Okay, where do you, where do you have?
Two thirty.
Two thirty.
It's not on there right now.
You may have had one, but I say you put it on that line and call it that and put it.
Okay, are you going, there's no way of number operations or are you gonna split it with the president?
I would prefer it to be in the operations because, uh, let me tell you that state is not gonna live that on, on the, they don't want any of the electrical bills or anything on there, they should, but they say that, that's not what they're paying for.
So what does she want, or is that what you want?
What, what are you making?
No, I would put it, I put it.
He says I have three units that I have, she's.
It costs ten, the one we just done was ninety.
So we should, we should put enough in her to cover one unit anyway.
Yes, sir.
Okay, ten thousand dollars and what, two thirty what?
Two thirty.
Thirty, and what do you call it?
That is actually repair slash maintenance performed by others. There's other things that we want to list as well, there's other shares, accounts, kind of assets, but that one works as well as any, it makes sense.
Sounds good, so put it down low then. Okay, so we, we're done with appraisal, we moving on to operations, right? Okay, health insurance, look from three thousand to twelve thousand.
I thought you were supposed to go down south.
Flex, make it from fifty-six hundred down to three hundred.
It's over.
Cause I'll get the rest.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really, I mean, you got.
It is quite, it is quite, yeah, and it's because some, some employees are split between.
Yeah, it should be a fifty-fifty on one employee and, uh, twenty-five to seventy-five on the other part, seventy-five on operations and twenty-five on.
We have that, but I think that we may not have the right employee, but it should be fairly.
How many things we got on flex?
Just one. And that's, that's the chief clerk.
This can't be right, because seven thousand left there is exactly what one person gets for a twelve month.
So there's no. Should be a fifty-fifty split, yes, it should be fifty on one and fifty on the other, we're gonna work on that.
That's what I'm saying, I think, I think we have the, we do have the employees split between the one that's seventy-five, twenty-nine, and I think we have a wrong employee selected for that.
You do, cause our part, it's our part-time and our full, uh, full-time clerk, it's our part-time clerk up front and, and the full-time chief clerk.
All of that's gotta be corrected.
Yeah, all of that's gotta be corrected.
Is your part-time getting retirement knowledge?
I don't know if they're even involved in retirement, you know, I had a part-time that, that, uh, before she got, they made her pay retirement, um, I don't know if you remember the thing, but they made her pay retirement even as a part-time person, so I don't know if, um, that will be an HR question, I assume that she's paying into a retirement?
I think it's based on how many hours.
It may, yeah, if you were thirty, I think you'd, it may be a part-time.
Well, it may, it first might not.
Back to, back to what I was asking, okay, so flex twin, if it's under the price will be.
I was thinking you should say.
It's gonna, we could have.
All of that's.
Then the other half's gonna come down here into one twenty-seven under operations.
Okay, all of that's coming out. The twenty-one, nineteen, twenty-one, all the health insurance, all flex should add the same amount, but.
I'll try to get with you tomorrow and we'll try to get with HR and see if we can get those numbers hammered down and what needs to come in.
Okay. Contract services, you okay with, going from thirty-five hundred to that?
No, we're not. Yeah, it, it needs to be back at, at twenty-five, we, we bill out the, the tax bills because there's so many of them, we bill out the tax, I bill out manufactured homes in, in-house, I do the sixty-fives in, and I do the, um, renditions to business personal property in-house, but because of the number that needs to go out by October first, we, we have to outsource that and part of that is postage and part of that is contract services, and so the twenty-five needs to be there because that's, that's the cost of them doing the.
Hey, these, these little squat out mini, miniature homes, they call them, or what?
Yes, we're taxing them as manufactured homes, is what we're doing.
Okay, we, there was a guy down there in our convention, that's what he said, made a trick to things with the whole.
We have done that from day one, uh, we, we just, we made an internal decision that if they been moved in the middle of the night and if they're living in it, it should be a manufactured home.
Sounds good.
Well, you know, Paul has shown that there have been twenty-eight dollars spent on contract services this year, that's why I'm wondering that number.
Again, again, that's because I'll have to do it in just a few, few days, yeah.
Is that blocking?
I couldn't say harder.
Yeah, I will do it next time.
A blocking knee?
Do we also need to change the posties down here on two fifty-two, because you're fixing them, you was that money?
Yes.
So what, what, you requested three thousand?
Thanks to me for.
Whoa, which one is that name?
Two thirty.
Two fifty-two.
Two fifty-two.
What's going on with the internet service, I mean, cause it, it keeps going up. Seven fifty, question fourteen, and we're splitting two thousand.
I, I, I want to say that the seven fifty that was approved the year before was, I mean, was less than what we, we paid out, and I think I based that on what our internet costs for at this time.
Uh, I'm looking the same way, remember, is it on, what line number is that?
It's two fifty-four. I tried to look at those A and E's, but now.
Internet, so we've started this battle for.
I tried to look at the A and E's to see what we have, we have used on that line and I tried to stay somewhere.
We were right at fourteen hundred, three month, or three months left, so I figured that you were gonna be right at nineteen.
What was it the year before, did you tell us what it was the year before?
We don't, we'll have to really see.
Yeah.
But I did know that when I first came aboard, there was some changes in how the phone, the telephone line and the internet line were being split up.
Ah, that's fine.
We talked about that, so.
That's fine.
That's a change, so, so one of them went down and one of them went up, but it was the way the bills were being.
So, so you're splitting me with the entire courthouse, the, is that what, what's happening and, and with the cost here?
I think it is shared, I think it is.
It's shared, yes, it's the shared, it's this is for us, so I'm sorry.
So the cell, the service also. The cell's different, the cell's specific, this reimbursement's one, if you have your phone with your family, it's different.
I just have to. I just have to.
Well, what I'm showing it is, is that it's looking at.
I don't.
About two hundred and thirty-three dollars each year. Well, let's think about this one, if I could do it, in, in a way to mark for an employee's cell phone, we are reimbursed at six, sixty dollars, sixty dollars per, that's in here twenty dollars a year, so two hundred would be four hundred and forty dollars, so what I'm showing the winner pays about twelve hundred more dollars for internet service for those two.
But they have a wide, a deal and we're only, you're only reimbursed.
Six, actually, everybody's still at sixty, did anybody have a cell phone that was less than sixty dollars? You did?
Might be a corporate, I don't know.
I don't know, so, yeah, cause mine's a quarter hundred.
Um, I, man, I have one that stays in the cannon car for the cannon, um, appraisal, just so that she can, if she's out in the field and she's got to contact the people, they're not calling her, her, on her cell phone, they're calling her own business side.
And also, if there's any tablets or anything, those give a fee on us also, so that if you have any tablets in your vehicles.
We did have.
That we have service on, we know the point of that too.
All right, the largest in the field, which one?
Well, in twenty-three, that cell phone service or internet service was one thousand fourteen twenty-nine, that's what it was, it was budgeted in twenty-three.
Lot anticipated for the, for the end of this year.
Current cost, from May any, for twelve months will be nineteen hundred and twenty, we're charging, yeah, sixty-three a month. Yeah.
What are we at, did you say?
I, I, my next question was larger than me, was.
Yeah, um, part of that is that, um, I have three employees that have some training that are coming out, and part of that is that reason, um, I have a new employee that will, uh, go class, the first classes in November, it's really important that, that at least they give a basic, but I have two employees that will be seeking their certification, um, one that is seeking certification in that, so that we're not stuck, yeah.
That's what it takes, that's what it takes, I, I don't.
But that's what it is, that's, that's why that, that one.
We're at priority this year, so.
So, I'm sure you got getting started on it.
I'm, hopefully, these two, uh, that are real close, they, I mean, I have one that needs one more class that she can, she can sit for her certification, I have one that can sit for the certification, but she really needs to do the, uh, it's an updated course before she sits.
Okay.
Yeah.
You got it, it worked.
Yes, and then I have a new employee that hopefully will be, will try and do, uh, you know, wait, I'll ask them.
What, what number y'all next to? I'm done.
I don't know.
I'm done with that. Everybody good?
Good.
All right, who y'all look to next, since we got? Let's take five minutes.
If you send me something, I thought, I wanted to have you in those two years, like, salary, I would already.
I, I realize, who y'all would take next, Sheriff Jail or what?
Uh, we could put up a sign maybe for you.
We sure can, whenever.
But. I said I already, we're really good, it's, we're not sure. All right, we ready now, we're on, uh, department, sheriff's office, general funds that we're at?
First question, everything, the two requests is show.
There's a request, uh, for the Apollo put it in the request and I'll read it off exactly how it was requested, it says, official year twenty twenty-five, we would like to request a new position within our organizational chart, we'd like to hire an uncertain, a person that's a long-term, that mission being paid very important, this person will be responsible for evidence, armor receiving, processing, and submission to the lab, they will be responsible for checking audio permits, this person will also handle all body camera download and request for video, which is through the DA's office, other various meetings will be a part of this position, um.
We can't budget for something that doesn't exist, so until it passes, we can't budget for it.
But this is my question, is it in this budget, the mail, in this budget, that's what I'm asking.
It shouldn't be, cause it doesn't exist. That's just what, what he say, he's requesting. Yeah, but you gotta come to us, we gotta approve the position before you budget.
We were told to present in the budget, to create.
So how would you not, what would you not?
That's a done exist, man, don't get on it. That is like to me saying, hey, I want a hundred five dollars for a swimming pool, well then. Well, then, six months later, I'm going to come to y'all and say, hey, I need a resolution for a swimming pool. I mean, I'm not getting off to anybody, but you can't budget for something that don't exist. It don't exist today.
But that's, that, that's what they request, something to be considered.
Considered.
But if we do that, then we're going to be, then after it passes or don't pass at the next meeting, then we gotta go away and change the budget. Why can't we just amend the budget after the resolution?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think, that's, I'm with Terry, I think what he does is bring this new position to us, and let's see if we, what we can work out on the new position, and then we could, we'll just have to adjust the budget for next year because I don't see us putting a new employee this year.
I don't think we can legally accept an appropriate position if it doesn't exist.
Well, I understand, but I mean, if they don't, if they're not asked, you know, no, this, this, they've asked.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah. So, and to clarify for Sheriff's Hall and what we were told in order to present this position, you want us to present it in the September's commission name?
We have to pass a resolution.
But that...
Is that the only other thing that's not showing up in?
Correct. The one thing that, just as a correction, and I think it will make everybody feel better. Uh, we did ask for a vehicle in this budget, but we have since requested for that to be removed because we're, it's a, it's just a waiting game. Um, that the Sheriff's Office will be awarded a four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar grant for vehicles. Uh, so that's going to save the commission some money. That's the reason we, this, this particular position, we'll talk about it more, is very... If you look at it, it's probably the most critical of our needs at Sheriff's Office, even more so than, than deputies, because of some issues that were happening.
Um, the vehicle, let me ask you, you took, you're asking to take it out, but let me ask you this. It, you know, the whole purpose in, in the grant was to get us to the point where we're rotating vehicles.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, if you take that money out, you're still going to be on a rotation?
I think that we're going to have to see how many vehicles that that money is going to be able to buy versus exactly where our needs is. Um, and then, at that point, I think we would be good this year to not request any, and then maybe present a plan, once we see what we got, see what we got left, we present a plan, um, to the commission. But I don't think this year it would be any sense in requesting a vehicle in the sheriff's budget. Just, just, just to let us, and that would give us and y'all a chance to sit down and come up with a plan versus us shooting blind right now. We know what we're potentially getting, and I, I feel confident we should get at least six tacos out of that money, uh, or six vehicles out of that money. Uh, we're just waiting to see, put actual factual numbers together versus just shooting for a little wave.
Uh, just changing it a little bit, since we're talking about another employee. Uh, so our SRO officers, how many of them work through the summer?
Oh, they all work through the summer, yes, sir. Um, and we've only got two. We, we've had a whole time, we can't find the third one. But this particular, the position that we're, is a year-long position.
But we budgeted three.
Correct.
Okay, so three, okay, so we got a whole employee that's budgeted for the whole year with benefits and everything.
Well, the school, of course, pays for that hundred and seventy days.
They pay, they pay very hard, I mean, we furnish the car, insurance, life and liberty. So I'm just saying, I want to make sure that what we're getting out of that, when you come and ask them for another employee, because I'm, you know, I'm a little shocked about that because I think, I, I understand about the going out here, I thought that was going, so those two others, I thought was going to come in and sort of facilitate some of the stuff that we were talking about. So it's going to have three, so it's like emptying out those weapons. We've been talking about those weapons, I think, since I come in office.
There's, so, we're bound by law as to who can have access to those rooms. We can't, right now, Clay Smith is over the weapons, and I've got a night shift deputy that's over all the other...
So what can Clay Smith do to the weapon?
He can, the only thing he can, he's the only person with a key to that room.
So, so if you go in there, so what, what we're really talking about is, I think what we're trying to do is figure out to downsize or get rid of some of the weapons that are... So if, if, if that man went there and says, that weapon out there is, is, because I don't want to pay more money to have people look at the weapon. I, I don't care if it's, uh, if it's Daniel Boone's weapon, throw it up there and take the chop saw and start chopping that baby up.
I may can help answer what you're, the whole thing you're getting at. What this particular person would do is Clay can tell you, I can tell you, I've been in evidence position before. Is what it's going to take is somebody looking over that stuff twenty-four seven, and it's going to take that person on a regular. Needs to be a monthly basis sending, uh, case numbers, sending stuff and getting on Alacore, tracking these case numbers down and seeing what the deposition is of these, uh, of these different cases. So today, the case may not be closed, but next month, it may be closed. Today, we have to hold on to that evidence. Next month, we may not have to hold on to it. So it's going to put somebody tracking every piece of evidence twenty-four, which would prevent, and John and I have talked about this, which would prevent having to extend the facilities we have. Um, I, I think if we had somebody in there that could have a hand, we look, we're looking at my barcode system. Uh, our software guy that does our, our software, looking in, in our reports, has an internal barcode system. Uh, that he can, uh, help us with, and we can get set up with better inventory. Uh, it's just a fact that right now, you've seen the, there was pictures submitted, um, in this request as well. You've seen it before firsthand, there's just so much in there. Clay can tell you, what, what ends up happening is the deputy that we have this assigned to ends up beating thousands of dollars of overtime because he can't do his job sufficiently, answer calls, and the call volume that we have in this day and time, and worry about the call volumes that we have this day and time and work on that evidence. The problem is, is that person will get all the evidence out of the rooms they're working on, and then a domestic call come out. Or, uh, and then they have to put all the evidence back up in that room because if we're caught, well, that evidence is not secure, that case could be disposed. So it's going to be better for us all around, it would be, it would be better practices for us all the way around, uh, to have somebody. But this person would not only be looking at that, we would have them looking at log interference. We would have them looking at, like last week, our two clerks was in, um, in a clerk's conference, they could be sitting there answering the phone. Uh, there's many things that we could use this person for, wouldn't be just for... But our SROs, going back to the initial question, our SROs, they can't have a temporary, we can't give somebody temporary access and then turn around and take it away from them. Because they're not in the office to keep a handle on that through the schools. We don't, our through the school, um, year, we don't even see them through the school year. But they're, they're in the schools.
Let me ask you too, and it's something that maybe Lisa needs to look at. On the RSO, that money, we've got y'all going into the sheriff's budget. Does that need, do we need to separate that, Lisa, where we have a better tracking on? Like, we're, we're budgeting for three RSO, but we've only actually used money for two. Where is that additional money at that we, that we budget for?
It's still in the salary budget. I can split that out if you want me to. Um, I don't know of a way other than just to make another line, I don't put the same number on it and just put a notation that is for the SROs, but...
I think that would help in your, your bookkeeping process too, when the school submits that check, it would probably help out tremendously.
And that is a, that is a, something I can relate to, um, because I don't ever know, or usually don't know if you have a SRO on the job or not.
Because who, like I said, we budget for three, but we only use for two, so that money is still there.
It's in the sheriff's budget. Now, as you know, the sheriff's department gets carryovers if they have money left over in the department, but salaries are not part of that. So, they would just not spend the money and stay in the general fund.
And it comes back to the general fund?
Yes, stays in the general fund.
All right, so y'all ready to start? Where do you want to start? You want to start at, uh...
Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Office, General Fund.
Yeah, but, all right, do you want to start at one eleven?
So I think, I think we're, we're in question about the, the salaries.
Yep. One eleven through, one eleven through one forty-nine, Paula always on the requested side, zero is that, and let's, uh, let's Lisa come up with those here, do so.
Even with the department, is that we still...
So I, I wouldn't be able to comfortably answer any of those questions, that would be, need to be, Lisa.
So we, we need to move where to?
Yeah, we, we can still do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so my question is, why did we go up a hundred and ten thousand on salaries?
Positions this year being filled, maybe that weren't filled before. Um, of course, the budget, like I said, the salary budget, I don't do that. I do check, try to check our formulas. Sometimes I don't know which, you know, which employees are working for which department. I don't always know that. But, um, I, have we added, have we added more employees to the sheriff's department this year?
I mean, we, this is probably the first year that we have, um, been full-staffed in a long time. I can't think, last budget year, we were down maybe one, uh, but still, you know, even, even, Paula did not come up with that hundred and ten thousand dollar increase that had to be, because on hers was zero.
I understand that, I was going to answer.
What I'm saying is, is I, I've got all their salaries in here on their spreadsheet, I'm looking at her spreadsheet right now, and that's what it's telling me, is what, what needs to be in there, exactly that, and that is based on, um, all positions. I actually questioned Emily about it because, um, I, I could tell that it's higher. And she told me she get pulled the org chart, and now I have to pull all the org charts in the department when we start looking at this. Because I want to make sure that we at least have enough people on our budget to cover all the positions for the org chart, because they can be filled, if those exist, and the department has the right to fill that position. So that's, that's where I am. I show every...
Position filled.
Every position filled. I have, I do see an open temp that's on here.
She's got that, that is taken, the only position that we have open is the SRO position.
Okay.
The, and I think she's, she might have that word wrong in her org, in, in the chart.
And it is, it is a budget as a full-time employee, so that's the...
So the temp position that y'all passed in a couple of months ago was because Clay was having a train for Wayne's position, and that was to get us filled. But once, once Clay turns up, that's going to what?
Okay, so the SRO salaries are in that money too?
Yes, they are. So that's all the SROs, that's all the deputies, that's the employees, everybody.
So what, what are you, so, do we have a participatory carryover for salaries then?
No, we don't, we don't do that.
No, what I'm telling you is, let me, we're saying we budgeted a dollar. At the end of the year, do they spend seventy-five cents or do they spend a dollar and a half?
Goes back to the general fund.
I know.
It stays in the general fund, never, never leaves the general fund.
But what I'm saying is, is, all I'm saying is, if it's budgeted in, in our, in our numbers, I'm just trying to figure this up, new employee. Are we, are, are we on average, whether they might have everybody, because you know, a wave will come through and they lose one or two deputies at times. I'm just not being mean, I understand that, so, so what we're saying is that at the end of the year, there, most of the time, and since I, in years, we have really never spent that money.
We've always had a little leftover in, or some leftover in money.
They're usually fairly close. I mean, the salaries are pretty, pretty on point. You have had trouble when you've had, gone through a spate where you have had trouble hiring somebody, but it's, it's fairly close. It's not thousands and thousands of dollars off, it's a lot.
I saw what I...
I'll give you a final number.
We just had to double check that.
I actually did have her double check this one, because that's what I was saying. I had, I was like, I cannot tell, because I had the org chart, which is fairly complicated compared to everyone else's org chart. And, um, I had her actually go back through and count, like, how many deputies she had on the org chart compared to what she had on the budget. And, um, there was one case where I could tell something was a little off. And this is, this is another thing that came up when I was looking at, um, salary items, because she asked me to just go back through the formulas on it. She had confidence that she had all the employees listed and had their pay rate right, even with their step increase. But we have one, we have one employee, and it's our courthouse deputy, that is, on, on my salary budget, it's split. Fifty percent of that person is paid through the sheriff's department. Twenty-five percent is paid through, um, the private judge's office, and twenty-five percent is paid through revenue commission operating fund. In our payroll system, it's all being paid up through share. So those kinds of things, it's...
Well, if the courthouse share...
That's just one example of that.
I mean, she does nothing for the sheriff's department, other than she's a long portion of officer that, that can make her rest at the courthouse.
If you go back again, if it's, if it was paid in twenty-five percent less, we went fifty-fifty.
She's certified through...
Yeah, she, she's employed through us to maintain her certification because courthouse will have its own.
They don't, who pays for it?
I mean, we're paying for...
I know, but I'm just talking about on her end, how the money, we're talking about that.
I mean, it is, it is just an issue of how should, how should it be, okay? I'm saying on our, on our salary, salary budget that Emily uses, she's got it split up.
Which one?
But the payroll system itself is not split like that. It's all being had out sheriff's department. And if you're watching, if you're trying to get your exact salary numbers and what you do exactly what you spent on that, that is going to affect that. It's the only employee that, in your department. There are other, um, departments that have some kinds of issues that are affecting that way too. And they are not mimicking each other, and I don't know which one's correct, so I don't want to change it until I know what's correct.
Well, my turn. Is it possible that the new employee you're asking for is already in the budget, the salary?
Mm-mm. I, I would think, but we're not asking for anything other than the salary. We're not asking for the, we're not asking...
Yeah, but I meant, because that one, the salary is increased, the salary line.
They're not on here, they're not. I'm in sure.
So, so Lisa, so, does that mean the courthouse, so who is it split between?
Well, on the salary budget, it's split between, uh, the sheriff's department, fifty percent, twenty-five percent at private, and twenty-five percent at revenue commission. In the payroll system, it's only being paid out sheriff's department, so twenty-one, they...
Well, I think fifty percent is what we paid out of the private budget office, fifty percent is what we paid out of the revenue commission office.
That's what the, that's what the commission wants.
I mean, they're, they're the ones requesting that.
Can I just ask her if that's what happened, and y'all considered that position, that we're asking for in this amount?
We're working on this.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And, and another thing, the cases that are, I don't know if that's something that Joyce is real fit with her expenses, that she can, you know, turn in and we only pay a portion of it. That might send us something there too.
Yeah, just ask about that.
My next one is, I'm in board insurance, one twenty-six. So we want eight hundred to twenty-three hundred. And we got the same number of employees, don't we?
Those numbers are going to be based on, um, we'll look on this. It's based on percentages, and every, every worker's comp position has different, um, rates that we pay workers' comp on. Uh, it's by actual, um, labor code.
I just don't understand why eight hundred to twenty-three hundred, because everybody's got that same job.
I have to get with Emily on that one, because that's something that she would have keyed in. I don't have, unless... I mean, you're not even seeing the other side. She's showing, she's showing the same percentage on everybody in the office, everybody for the sheriff's department, which is point oh three, two eight is what she's got. Three point two eight percent, basically. So I could talk to her about that and see if there's something that's not...
All right, it says, that's what I was interested in.
Oh, I just don't think about one twenty-six. Uh, are y'all okay with the tires?
Oh, I, I see y'all, that was...
It went from fifteen to twelve, that's what?
That should be, that should be okay. Uh, we have, um, this year, we have a twenty-three zone. And I can understand last year, I was on that thirty, and this year, I say last year, twenty twenty-three, and this year, we have it going through. We need to put more miles on vehicles this year.
Plus you had one upside down, so I don't want to give you mine.
Two thirty-four, repair and maintenance for vehicles. Went from thirty-two to seventy thousand, and I thought we're getting new vehicles, so I should go there.
Well, and, and we're still dealing with our, like, our two, we've got one two thousand and fifteen on the road, the jail's got a two thousand and... The jail's got a two thousand and fifteen on the road. And then I've got, I've got a couple of two thousand and eighteen to nineteen. Um, and, and then we're getting, finally getting to the twenty-one, the twenty-three at that time. We're still like, we had a eighteen that a transmission went out on the other day. We're still running into those same issues. Uh, and next one thing that, that John and I, and we have gotten onto Buster Miles and have went down there and sat with, it was Andy and Tim Wilcox. Because before, they were just making these repairs and not running it by us. Every repair, other than oil change, they have to run it by us. And we're not just repairing any little thing. I think at some point, I'm, I think the sheriff's at the same understanding that I am, that we probably need to revisit, you know, maybe re beginning this. Um, but at status quo, that's where we're at and.
How much, how much do we spend this year?
We're down, and this was probably by the end, maybe halfway through August, we had spent.
Sixty-four hundred?
It's two thirty-four.
Okay.
Sixty-four.
We were running forty-eight thousand, right at forty-eight thousand.
Fifty thousand and three months left.
And then sixty-four is about what I predict when it would have, have at the end. The average is out over the next few months, about sixty-four thousand.
And we, we, there is another request that I, I should have mentioned, I, Laura had, and it's in line item. And I know I'm jumping to the bottom, let me get to it, maybe. And I apologize for not being prepared. It's for line item one sixty-three, we would request in the twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars for GPS devices going to fifteen vehicles. And the reason to do that was to hopefully cut down and be able to monitor our, our deputies.
How much is that?
Twenty-two fifty.
I'm, I'm, I'm for that to stay in there.
And that's the.
I said that to, hopefully, we can start looking if there is any abuse and how the vehicles are being drove or anything like that. We will be able to monitor, monitor it from the same app that we use within the sheriff's office. So there again, John and I sit down and try to battle this maintenance thing every month. But we don't know, it's one of those things that, you know, we, we don't know what to do. I mean, other than repair the necessities and keep, keep going.
You gotta, you gotta keep them going, but I think, I think setting up some accountability, uh, because like, on, on a deputy's car, you got your radio, whether he radios and does his thing. But what kind of, if he's on his cell phone or using his cell phone, what kind of, what, how does that work?
Uh, nothing at this point. That's the reason we're asking, the biggest thing with GPS is it's monitor speed, is what we want to look at, monitor just to, and, and that way we can hopefully, and I tell you where that comes from, and I know we've got a deputy sitting back here, and I hope he don't go back and start telling everybody, but where that comes from is Matthew Wade at Calvin County said that they put GPSs in their vehicles. And within the first month, they had their speed alert set at a certain amount. Within the second month, they changed it. And once they started doing it, said their vehicle accident, said everything had cut down just by having an GPS device in it.
And plus having that, if something did happen, you can monitor it to protect the police officer. They said, oh, he was barreled on that through here, but you'd have that.
Well, looking at what went on in Pauling County and what went on in Carroll County the past few weeks for the two deputies that died. Um, we are a rural county, if our deputy's is out somewhere and they get shot, we can find him.
Exactly.
So.
Okay.
But anyway, so that, to battle the, back to the maintenance, but we're trying.
How many vehicles do y'all have?
If you hit and blow it out.
Well, we've got sixteen counting, um, that's all the deputies, the two investigators, mine and Jones. And then the jail has the van, transport van, Clay's vehicle, and then the truck Wayne's driving. And then the one that's used on inmate.
That's twenty-one. Does that sound about right, Wayne?
Somewhere about there. And we've got, we finally have one extra, which is a fifteen that revenue is covered with Gregor, but that's actually helping this one. We do have it down instead of us having a car.
But you have some problem.
So that's three hundred and thirty-three dollars per vehicle on average. And that don't count tires though, because that's in a different line. That's a lot of maintenance. Or it's a jack.
We're running, we're averaging between, between three to five thousand miles a month on every vehicle. Um, and there's, our call volume is at room, and Chris will could tell you that. Our call, we're, we're running from, from Ford Springs to Hollis on a normal basis. And it, it's just, we're, we're running, we're, we're wide open with calls. Our call volume is ridiculous.
Hey. This may not be the place to say this, but, I mean, if we're not be paying that, we might need to look into building our own shop and hire somebody. Because seventy thousand for your department, another ten for Joyce's department, and on down line, I mean, hell, for a quarter million dollars, I can run a shop.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I believe that's.
Coming with you there, two years ago. Yeah.
Yeah. But see, that's a different line code. This seventy thousand is just for breakdowns.
Well, I know, but you have a hundred and forty thousand like that.
Yeah, you're gonna have to have a lot of.
The tires is, the tires is also same paid with, so it's as cheap as we.
Well, see, that's. And that's why I wanted to go that border one time.
Well, we go there multiple times. We try to catch them when they're on sale.
Yeah.
How much longer do you have on contract with?
Half a year. I can't recall, I think it was a three-year contract.
I think it was a three-year contract.
But all we have to do is give them a nine-day notice to, to, and, and, you know, we have, John and I have discussed with our other local vendors, you know, just trying to see if they'd be interested. Um, there may be a little bit of interest, but it would just be one of those things of, of, I think, putting pen and paper back together and negotiating. Uh, we never had this problem when we was using the other team. I mean, I.
I knew it was gonna be like this, so good luck.
Okay, so you got to have it scheduled.
If we stay, if we stay on track with where we're at, then, then maybe that can change if we look at.
I don't know if we knocking down the.
That's where I would.
Knocking down the TQ then, if you spend all that and you come back and we'll, we'll look at it again.
You come back with a new transmission, that's how many, or you need to sell it?
Well, maybe, maybe if, if this grant will hurry up coming, when you get those, that would cut down a lot of that maintenance in return, we, uh, we, we cut that down.
Just move that down.
I don't see anything else. You got anything else?
I don't know.
That's two hundred thousand dollar increase in your budget, which would take twenty off of it still. Everything's going up.
Y'all ready to move to jail?
Now we're ready for jail.
Okay, on the, uh, line item, uh, two forty-two. Did you review that one, Lisa?
On which line? On which, are you on the jail?
Yeah, and it's natural gas.
Yeah, we're on jail. He's already way up.
You have a job done.
Okay, well, I thought you said it was over with, I just want to say.
Thank you, Patrick, thank you all.
Clay, get this.
Clay?
Oh, wow.
Come on up here, hot seat, bub.
You're used to that.
I'll, I'll back you up.
I appreciate it.
Oh, that's right.
You just wait till you, you, you change position.
Yeah. I do have some stuff that Clay don't, I think.
More money. Okay, let me, this is the, this is the HR question. Help insurance. That's the next question. It do a question.
For salary budget, I think.
Well, yeah, that's a good, that's a nice. Well, no.
Saying, uh.
Cause there's a dollar that.
The medical and dental for prison.
That was the, you know, that was one of the questions I asked, asking you, Laura, again, why it's flying in.
That's two different lines. As, um, line one fifty-eight is the medical and dental, that's like for outside medical stuff. And usually, that bill will come whenever QCAC sends it, it may be. And that's, that's what I've worked on. And this is pretty shocking. I keep, I've been ringing the alarm bell about that line, but this, this last year, we've had a hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars outside medical bills. And of that amount, I have negotiated down seventy-seven thousand off of that. But that still leaves seventy-four thousand hanging out there for QCAC to negotiate and pay. So, and our contract just covers ten thousand of that, so. That's the, that's the big unknown. I don't know how much they're negotiating because all the rest of it, like when a bill for sixty thousand dollars comes in, I don't trust somebody else, so I try to do it myself, at least get them started. Um, but they negotiate all the doc, outside doctor visits. We've had all kinds of pregnant women in jails, has to go to doctors every week. We've had one that was had to be live flyed out. So we've had UAV bills, RMC bills and everything else this year.
Okay, so back to my question. Why are they going to zero?
And also, this would be a good time to bring this up too. EMS just emailed, I guess, Lisa, again today. You know, they started charging a hundred and seventy-five dollars every time a deputy or jailer called to check somebody out. Plus, we had, we did have one transporter, I think, Lisa, was it like fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars, something like that?
I remember exactly how much it was on him. It wasn't, it didn't sound like it was that much that he was dealing.
Yeah. But, um, and one about a week, and Tracy, I'll just have to talk to him and explain how this works. He sends the bills to us and then we make sure the inmate was in our custody. Because a lot of times, sometimes they're not. So we cull those and then we send them to QCAC to be paid. But that's something new that we might want to visit with the hospital boards and see. We're just swapping tax money around and really the EMS and us are both under the commission.
Yeah, are they giving us any kind of break or are they just charging us like a?
I think they charge everybody a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Comes to your house and check your blood pressures, a hundred and seventy-five bucks to have a.
Is it that much?
It usually thirty.
It's went up.
Yeah, I thought it was twenty-five or forty or something.
So what I was gonna say is, if you're looking at that line one fifty-eight, and I think you are the medical and dental services for prisoners, I didn't put anything on that line, even though he had a request for that on that line. Because we haven't spent anything out of that line.
Yeah, we had, we had.
With QCAC.
We had a little bit last, yeah, the dingle is not included in our contract, so all of that comes out. So we'll have, we had some last month and we'll have some this month. But the big thing is all that hanging out there. I don't know when the bill's gonna come due. And maybe they'll lose track and not bill us.
Is that, is that something we need to, like I was hearing, which you think, uh, over him?
Yeah, because we're responsible for either way, so I would at least put ten or fifteen thousand there to help.
If you get something big, you got to come back and go out and make it better again.
Yes, yes.
So we need to leave the fifteen thousand in there, okay?
Like you said, you know, when I change something like that, it's because something, I have not seen any expenditure. If you're sitting there with a fifty thousand dollar budget or eighteen thousand dollar budget that you're requesting, I'm just looking at.
And, and normally it comes in one big bill, we just haven't got that bill yet.
Okay.
Okay, and on the little note pad over there, Tuesday's work session, we need to come up with two people to go talk to a hospital board. And I'll volunteer.
And they, or they, they're working on budgets, I don't know.
How about your one seven, if you're on your training? You got fifty-five hundred last year and she's got two thousand. Or.
It's on, uh, is that cause Clay's gonna have some, some different timing?
Yeah, Clay's gonna be going to all of the, you know, ride led up this year, not been going. Clay, he's done, been going to.
I've been to one so far, I got three coming up in the next month.
Three coming up.
But it's gonna be a nerve, I mean, this one.
I put two thousand on it, it's gonna be fifty-five hundred, but that's because you only spent eight hundred this year. But if you think you need, if you have more because Clay's gonna have to do some more training then.
And that, that'll also be.
The jailers.
Yeah, you know, we have to send two jailers four times a year for training too, for the insurance.
So you need the fifty-five what you got last year, that covered? Or somewhere in the bill or?
No, the one seven, that includes the. The one seven includes everything, right?
No.
The hotels.
Your lodging and everything is separate line, it's two sixty-four. It's just for your, the classes themselves or whatever conference you're going to do or the training education is just for the association or whatever that you're paying.
So if that's just for the fees, two thousand will be fine on that line, but might want to increase the lodging and bills.
Lodging and bills, what, is, is that two thousand right now?
Yeah.
So does it, it needs to go up, you think?
I think so, yeah, because, um, these hotels.
That's two sixty-four.
How much is that one bill, Clay, coming up?
Increase it to one. If they're trying to settle, how much, I think they increase that.
I would increase that to four thousand.
Okay. I think that's reasonable, because that, I know it costs, I mean, for lodging.
Conference total was six, seventy-eight, sixty, just by sale.
So you're saying it's seven hundred dollars just for one person, so that's.
There's two other more I'm going to that are at least two to three nights. And then that's not included, that's, you know, you should have two other jobs that are going to start from your team, so. You gotta include that too.
Okay, two good things.
Well, what about, there's a big difference in the, uh, we've got mislignings, one ninety-nine. We requested three thousand, but we only got five hundred.
And we had always used smaller mail, that's why I had it that way. We probably did, actually, we've had forty couple hours used that one ninety-nine this year.
Yeah, there's a lot of things we try to use that for, but then we know y'all don't like mislignings, so we try to put it somewhere else and the, we don't fit. There's some times it just don't fit.
I mean, if it's a small something, it makes sense, you know, hey, this is just our plan, probably ever do this, I don't anticipate I'll have it again this year. Then it's, then it's appropriate for mislignings. But I did kind of try my best to encourage everybody to pick a category for that.
What about the safety supply same day from two thousand to seven fifty?
Yeah, that, I mean, the safety supplies really come out of, unless we're just to pay a bill for, um, supply works. Like that's gloves and cleaning supplies and stuff like that is what I consider safety supplies. All this come about during COVID. So, um, you know, really, it's, most of that comes out of two sixteen.
Right, that, that's what ends up happening is a lot of times you'll have, like your cleaning supplies, it's very easily, that stuff's worked in with.
Yeah, so it may look like we didn't spend the thing out of safety supplies just because we forgot to take it out of that line instead of it out of two sixteen. Cause it all comes from the same company.
Okay, so we don't need to accept it too then.
And what you can do is if you were running over your janitorial supplies or your cleaning supplies, you can move it, do a line revision and have what's put in that safety supply line over to the line.
If it's a jail, same as the sheriff, or the sheriff can move money, anybody wants to jail or not like that?
Yeah, we always have to.
Okay.
So.
You can move it.
I mean, I could move anything but salaries and insurance to wherever you want.
And just asset, that's the other one that you can't move. All the departments can do that within their own, with their own department. Jail can do it, they can move something from seven oh two six four, which is lodging, over to seven oh two one one if they need it there. They're saying they're not gonna use all the lodging expense, they can use it on office supplies or whatever they need to. They just need to submit a line, um, revision and we can do that. And that's.
Okay, I mean, two eighteen on food and food service supply. Two fifty to six hundred, which. Two fifty to six hundred, which, y'all requested two fifty, and I guess you changed it to six hundred.
I would have changed it only if I saw that we were whatever that, and where we're at right now, even without the rest of the year, is five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So I changed it to six hundred, just so.
And two thirty-five. Four thousand last year, they requested six thousand, and we only did a five hundred?
They only spent three hundred dollars on it. That's your repair and maintenance and your data processing?
Yeah, what that is, is our fingerprint machine. And we knew we were getting a grant for a new one this year. So instead of paying several thousand dollars for the maintenance, I just took a chance and didn't pay it, to try to save some money. So that's the reason we hadn't got that bill this year. But the new one, the grant finally come through, we're getting it in the next week or two, so that money will be started back up. I just was able to skip a year, because I knew was getting a new machine.
That's good.
And I, and I didn't know a figure on that, I figured it's gonna be about the same as the other one. I think it was usually around twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred dollars. I'm not, it's a whole different company, so I'm not sure about that, but, but there will be money spent out of that line next year.
So you can-
So keep it the same, right?
So is that okay, five hundred right now, because you're not gonna have to have any maintenance this year on it?
This is the next year, right?
Yeah, this is the next, yeah, well, I skipped this budget year, yes, we're gonna have to have it for next year. We're getting a new machine in the next week or two, so I'm sure we'll-
So what's your maintenance on that? I mean, is there a maintenance contrast issue?
On the fingerprint machines, yeah. Uh, it's around twenty-six or twenty-seven hundred dollars is what the previous company was.
Because your request was for six thousand dollars in that line?
Well, I think that, that is for, we're having to, we got the grant covered the actual fingerprint machine, the live scan machine. It didn't cover the new printer and possibly a new PC, so I think, I think it'll take that.
So you're saying it's gonna take this?
Yeah, we know, we just found out last week, it's not, the printer was not included, which you thought it was, so those things are about twelve hundred dollars for those fingerprint.
So change that back to six thousand. And then, two forty-two, humans natural gas questions.
Okay, is it spent on gas?
I'll make sure we add that.
Okay, if it, to answer your question, I kind of did catch what you were saying, is, did that go down with the change out from that boiler to the? I did change that, because what I'm actually anticipating for this year is right at twenty-eight thousand dollars. So I bumped it back down, but then left it at twenty-three, because I think with the, with the change out of the water heaters, I think it would have probably did for that. I didn't wanna go too far out, but I left it just at twenty-three, because we have spent, year to date, we have spent, let's see, I'm on my line again, just too many lines? Okay, we're talking about now, two forty-one, two forty-one-
There's like two-
Or two forty-two. We had, as of the end of June or July, I can't remember, I think it's the end of June, eighteen thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars. So if you pro-rate that out for the end of the year, it's right at twenty-eight thousand dollars. So I left it at twenty-three, because I think, since we've said that marked the inquiry, or decrease in-
Well, the bill, the bills you sent showed that we were talking several eight hundred dollars per month less.
Yes, and that's, that's why I-
In the summer, you're gonna get-
I would kind of bump it up, I would bump it up.
And that's one of the questions that's gonna come up, how much is it more in the wintertime?
Oh, it's a lot, because we've got,
Because you got units of just full gas.
Seven, eight, nine, we got about ten units that are all gas, so the gas bill goes way up in the wintertime. And it comes way down-
As I was gonna, I would have increased it, I would have increased it to about twenty-eight to thirty thousand, if it wasn't for that factor. But I counted that factor in with, on it with the-
So that figure you're seeing the bill the summer is just for those hot water heaters.
At least that fact would have shut down.
So, that's good. Okay, so we're gonna leave that. Okay, two seventy-four, general liability insurance. Why did we go down to six thousand dollars? We were no, pretty close, what'd that cost?
I always based the insurance on exactly what it ended up costing, it cost us exactly forty-eight hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-six cents. And it's not gonna change, because we only have it once a year. So that's how much it cost us, I left it at six thousand, just to make sure that I covered any, which always at least does by a six to ten percent increase. I was trying to make sure that we had it completely covered, but that is the exact number.
So we set aside twice as much last year as we should?
Yes, right.
Yeah, it used to be, I think, kind of twelve thousand dollars, is what come out of that line, I don't know what happened that it went down, but-
Save money, just on one, one line. Feeding the prisoners went up five, that's probably right.
Well, we did, what I had, when you were anticipating, the number was right at twenty-three thousand, and it's gonna go up, but I'll be like, oh.
What is four oh seven? I don't have a description, it's fifty dollars and it's-
Four oh seven is motor vehicle license plates.
That's back to my question I had, well, yeah.
Five dollars, must, must be, I can't remember, I don't know.
Somebody tell me if I have a lot of, uh-
That's probably right.
There's a two, I think it's two dollars and fifty cent fee for a transfer if you already have the wood tag, and if you have purchased a tag, it's, it's five dollars, so.
We'll show you, they changed the way that we have to get those rich, do those things now, we fill them online, and they'll charge you, I think we're in it online, they make you do it online. So it's right up around five minutes.
Yeah, that should be in progress.
Right in that ballpark.
Okay, so you need to go back-
It's just enough to cover it.
You need to go back to really, so we can correct that, I'll be, I'll be at the hundred dollars, and there's two on the free day.
All right.
Clay, you got any other questions?
You should have, Tim.
What was that contract? I said, what was that contract?
Yes, that's correct, that's, that's the one. I had shown that, and I only had about eleven hundred dollars for the first nine months of the year, so I anticipated it'd be about sixty-four.
I think the biggest amount is, is a thousand, that was the one that's covered. You know, you're saying?
It didn't, it didn't, it should survive a while, I think that's-
Clay, for the last one, you know, you just-
You tell me these things are salaries, that's not, we have a regulation here, but they do.
And those payroll allowances aren't right either, I'm sure, because they got the exact same amount we got this year. You know what's going up.
She's gone with that.
It's eleven, was this long?
Because of step raises, that's a lot, two and a half percent.
I was a little on that, and that is a, you know, I have so many eyes to pull together, some of my directions, that I rely on it, I don't want to- Just be up to the split sheet, and have all my things, and all I do is say, check, and make sure she's got everybody happy. And in general, if you look back, then I would go with the exact dollar figure.
It's just a mystery about the sheriff's office, I want to go in one thousand dollars.
Don't ever explain that. Long as they have a rest, and when we've been over the budget, and we're talking about a skin, is the van. I don't know what your model of van is, one thing we will get is, I'm gonna eventually want to replace that. I'm trying to find-
Can you not use the grain?
Well, that's what we were talking about, I did put in the budget to request for a tow that is cheaper than the van, because nowadays, they're basically on the Sprinter vans, when you go to do a Sprinter van, you have to do the inserts, which is either almost as much, or a little bit close to how much the van costs. So you're looking, you know, we're looking, they have the inserts for a Sprinter van, or a Transit van, so it's like, be twenty thousand dollars for, to just the insert part, not just the vehicle. So, that's why, well, we, we don't, like Lance off types before, we don't do as much prison runs anymore, so we're not taking five to ten people, whereas, so we can do a tow instead of the van. I mean, the van, in my opinion, and we, Lance, we're gonna be a whole, you know, it's, it would be a, a, a solution, it would be a tow instead of a van. But that's, but basically, we won't have to look into replacing it.
That's not in your request, though?
I did request for it, in the budget, I, I put it in there.
What would that, what would that be here, like that, would have to be?
It would just be a partition of cages, and, and just a regular, no, we don't get blue light, we don't need any merchandise or anything.
About fifty-five thousand should cover equipment and vehicles.
But you're getting, you're probably getting some new vehicles, any of those vehicles can be moved, don't go to-
And, and that's, there again,
You know, you're running prisoners all the time.
Looking, looking at, looking at our vehicle project, and I don't wanna dip off in laser lens business, because that's their business. I stay away from the jail, unless I take somebody to jail. I, I really truly think that, that, once we get this grant and start getting these vehicles in, and we start swapping around some vehicles, we could probably help them with their need. I feel confident we can. And, and what I would just ask is, if y'all do hold off this year, is, is there again, like I mentioned earlier, is, is at some point within next year, we're gonna have to sit down on a vehicle plan as a whole, but I think we would be fine this year.
And that's what I was gonna say, is, is, I don't know if I could say that on your side, I did request for a tow. Well-
It's actually not a sheet.
I, I did, I did request for it, so, I mean, I don't know about that far.
Yeah, it was on the procurement.
Yeah, so.
Okay, well, maybe I missed your sheet, so I've got-
That's what I was getting to, is I, I did request for that, we may also have a sort of inquiry for that, that was kind of a, that was a kind of a fake pump after the budget that we sat down with, so I was gonna let you know, we might be saving a little bit more money.
Things, things have greatly changed since we got that van. Used to, we'd take ten or twelve people to prison. We're lucky to take one or two every couple of months now. It just doesn't happen, so we use it for court, basically, the vans, you know.
So they get sent home before they can go now?
They just don't get sent?
Oh, never gets sent.
We're, we're-
We're lucky to get the paperwork done before they even bomb that, I mean, that's, that's basically what-
We've had multiple-
American wise, that's good.
Well, I mean, but the, I'm not a good part for that, but if you look at all this, we've had multiple trafficking cases that, that are investigators, you know, chief deputies, deputies that worked hard for to go get, and then, we get back to the jail, and they've already got somebody, they've been bombing out, and we're trying to get all the paperwork done for the hard work that you just put in to do, so, but that's all that's-
And, and to go back to your question a while ago about the SROs, we kept them busy all summer doing jail transports. I mean, we had transports all over the southeast just about, I mean, they really, really saved the jail this summer. So they wouldn't twiddle their thumbs, we, I-
I didn't know, I didn't know if they just took off for the summer, that's what, I mean, that's what I-
They generally will take their vacations here in the summer, that way they, outside of the school system, but like, Lance kept them busy, we kept them busy with, with metal transports. I want, Ryan had a lot of metal transports this summer, we didn't, I don't know, I think you missed a few though, but-
Maybe I'll wait for some after this meeting.
Okay. Zach, all right, Zach, gets to where y'all wanna meet again, or, or y'all got still some questions on jail, or what?
The teams definitely wanna meet again, or not, and then hopefully, you know, by then, Lisa has some cleanup for some of these. The only other big department is Lee's. Crystal's stuck in crystal, but hers is pretty, pretty clean, hers is pretty shitty, and she doesn't say anything about her.
So, what do y'all see? We, I mean, Thursday, we're gonna have, I mean, next Tuesday, we'll have a work session at three o'clock. And then you wanna work on budget after that, or what?
Well, I'm hoping we'll get some updates, and we look at, and see where we're at, on some of the requests and some of the-
Maybe we can do Lee. Before, could we, could we continue this meeting? Yeah, to, to like one o'clock, but then at three o'clock, we could do a- All right, that sounds good. What about this interviewing process stuff? Are y'all gonna interview anybody, or what?
We've got three, three that are gonna have to interview.
Are you excited, y'all wanna do that?
I think Emily's supposed to come back, is, is it what you said?
Well, did you skip the Emily?
Not, not today, I think, no.
Did y'all come up with the ED?
Yeah.
Did we wanna do the interviews?
I, I think, I think, yeah, in my opinion, it's pretty soon, I'm gonna skip the budget then, for-
So come back to them Tuesday or Thursday.
So y'all wanna continue the meeting till, on one Tuesday?
Yes, that's sure. We need to get this behind us before anything else.
Hold on a second, before, I may have shot my mouth off, because I got something, I think I gotta do.
You said you couldn't get here early.
No, I can't do that, sorry. I got a doctor for a minute, four o'clock.
So, just go Thursday and continue, Doctor?
Yeah.
So three o'clock, continue working.
Tuesday is a fucking important meeting too.
Yeah, but that's not until six o'clock. Lee did request that he, Joe was at the last possible Tuesday, because he's got, they got a JV football thing, and he's gonna get her done also. He said he'll be fine, because it's like a six percent, and he's determined that he gets known, and he gets his partner, and it'll be possible.
What?
This is amazing, cool.
This, right now, what we're in is, is to continue meeting.
So we can continue it for Tuesday?
Yes.
Or we can continue it for Wednesday, and go ahead and have our work session, our normal work session.
Y'all wanna do that, you wanna continue it till Wednesday, next week? Perfect.
Yeah, I can do anything on Wednesday.
Then we can come in at one, or two, or four.
What time y'all want to start Wednesday? That'd be September fourth.
Ten o'clock. I said, we'll get my second cup of coffee in. Now, if that lost mine, we'll do, what kind of?
The following week, the week of the eighth. I don't have nothing but one to follow me, so I'm hoping that week, August is my doctor's month for the year. I'm aligned with all my annual requests in August. All right, but Wednesday is, Wednesday a good time to continue this?
Can't do Wednesday?
Huh?
What can't we do Wednesday?
Oh, this can't be Wednesday? What about, what about Thursday? What time?
Work it out, will you? I can be here at any time now.
What do y'all think?
Except for Saturday, I'm going to that first football game in Tuscaloosa.
So, so why can we not do Tuesday? Why can we not?
Well, Terry's got it.
We can do Tuesday after the meeting, but-
That'd be fine, I don't know what's good then.
Well, try to do a work session as top week as possible, then, right?
And then jump right into, because the main thing is budget anyway.
Can you give a minute about the, the interview, Ron?
Well, let's do this so that, so that, make a motion to continue the meeting till Tuesday at, say, you think we need to work session done within an hour? Say, say a motion?
I make a motion to continue to work on the budget at four o'clock on the third of September.
Okay, I'll be there.
You say that, and, and, all of a sudden, say hi? All right, we continue till Tuesday or fourth. Yeah.